Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you, love your nails.
Today is Monday, June 21st. It is 9:01. We are here for a school board workshop. The purpose of the workshop today is for the superintendent search firm. Mr. Scott Cashman will be facilitating this for us, as well as the next agenda on the item also will be the school board attorney, I'm sorry auditor, excuse me, not our attorney, we have one right there. And I am going to go ahead and then turn this over to Mr. Cashman. Good morning.
Thank you, good morning, good to be here. This morning we'll review the search firm rankings. The goal today was to facilitate the discussion to pick a finalist for the search firms you will use for the next superintendent. There were five firms who submitted their information, and each of you have provided your rankings by either number one or number two preference. I did want to give the board some feedback I've received and then would like to open it up to discussion. So today, again, the intent was to pick one finalist the board would use for the search firm in order to pick the next superintendent. Based on some feedback I've received from board members, one of the other options is to explore having two finalists who would then come in for an in-person interview similar to what we did with the superintendents. So before I walk through the process and the categories and the rankings, I thought it would be best to open up and get board discussion and direction on the preference to either move towards one finalist today, or narrow it down to two finalists who the board would bring in for an in-person interview. So with that, I'll pause and open it up to any discussion or comment. Mrs. Givinelli.
I have two reservations. Number one, I don't think we've had enough public input to narrow this down. I think the community has not been able to actually participate. I think we need that, we should have had the committee, I've researched this past week, and many districts have already had a community involvement at this point in the process. And then, number two, I feel that they should have done some sort of presentation, these five, that we narrowed it down. I would like to see a presentation, at least, I understand out of the, I think we should have seen a presentation to better, to do this rubric with a better information and to see how the personalities are and how that's going to mesh with our board. I think that's really crucial, crucial at this point in time. So I don't think we've had enough information based on just paperwork, black and white paperwork, that's my opinion, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gittens?
Yes, good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here, Mr. Cashman. I agree, I don't know, at one point I felt like, did I miss something in this process? And when I was talking with staff about what to put on the webpage, I was not clear on today being selecting one, or selecting several, or whatever. I agree with Ms. Givinelli that it does not allow time for any weigh-in. If we select one today, excuse me, then the public has not had an opportunity to weigh in on that. I know they can send emails and phone calls and all of that, but I feel that should happen. Another point is, when we have selected a professional person, or a firm, or whatever, we have always had with the attorneys, with the internal audit, with, and something else that we, I think attorney twice, but we always had the professional companies come in and present who they are and what they are. Anyone can say things on paper and it look really, really good, but to hear them, to be able to ask them questions, and to involve the public in this, I just feel that it would be a necessary step. And I still maintain that we don't want to rush this, just for the purpose of rushing through, because my theory still is that the most qualified people to run a district our size and of our caliber are already going to be set for a position for this coming school year. And I just think we need to take our time and get the right person and not just get a person.
Thank you. Chair Jordan?
Thank you. Okay, the purpose of this, and this is, we have been speaking about this for some time, so today is not for us to choose, as for us to choose, who do we want to come here and make a presentation to us? So when they come, whoever we choose, two, three, whatever that looks like, and they come here and they do a presentation, at that time, that will be a briefing. And along with the briefing, public will have public input on that as well. That's how we had, because I know we did not want to, and Ms. Gittens, you were one of the ones that kept saying, we have to, you know, move forward, we have to move forward, we have to move forward. So I'm trying to move forward. Now, if you all want to take some steps back and wait on this, it's all, I'm good with that. Right now, HR has already contacted us this morning and asked us, when can people start applying? Because there are people who are already wanting to apply, but until all of this is done and the search firm is there, because they're the ones who will be handling it, not us, and then we would have to come, and that was actually a question I was going to ask, because then that would be the date that they could start applying for these positions. But that's going to be on the search firms doing their due diligence and doing their work for us, once they are put into place. And I think, yeah, I think that's it for the second.
Thank you. Back to Mrs. Gittens, and then Mrs. Patrica.
Thank you for letting me respond. Yes, in the beginning of this, when we first heard about the superintendent's retirement, I felt it was urgent that we move forward because of the timing. In my mind and professionally, we passed that time to move forward quickly, because we have kind of missed that timeline and mark to get someone to start the school, I mean, not even starting the school year, but close to it. Even professional people that I speak to will tell you, teachers, administrators, superintendents and all of that, look to move during a certain period of time at the end of a school year, from the spring to like June. After that, the music stops, they are in place. So that's why I was saying, yes, we need to move forward, but we passed that line now. So then, and we have an interim superintendent superintendent, so we need to make sure we do the right thing.
Thank you. Mrs. Patrica, and then Ms. Fisher?
So I would agree that narrowing it down to two and having them come in for presentations so that we can understand the personalities and whether they mesh is really important, but I do think we need to narrow it down today. I don't want five presentations by five. I mean, some of these were automatically disqualified in my mind, based on what they gave us in writing, so I do think we need to narrow it down.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, and I will agree with that. I think that we've been embarking on this process for a considerable length of time, since Dr. Atkins did announce his retirement. I am all for public input at all costs, but I want to say that we have over 500,000 registered voters in Lee County, and we cannot cater to a small group of vocal minority. We can't, you know, we can't cater to that. We have to make sure that we are representing our entire district of voters and taxpayers, and acting in the best interest of our kids. And I think that we need to move forward today and select two or three, whatever it may be, have them present to us if that seems to be necessary, and move forward, because we have publicly advertised certain criteria that we have set as a board, and I think we need to continue on with the path that we started, and, you know, just move forward. And thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? What I'll look for will be board direction, and then I'll just ask for a verbal and a hand vote on agreement then, that we will narrow it down to two finalists today, and we'll bring them in for an in-person interview. And then, you know, after that, we could discuss the categories and questions. Further discussion? Mrs. Gittens?
I would like to suggest that there be three. There are some that, you know, some people obviously want and all of that, but I just feel that we should have at least three to select from.
Okay. Other discussion? Vice Chair Vaughn?
I would go with two, and I would like to have a discussion on possible conflict of interest with keeping the Florida School Board Association as part of the firms that we are considering.
Okay.
I think that bears talking about.
Vice Chair Vaughn, would you be comfortable at first, and it could be for discussion, we would make, the board would give direction on two or three, and then the next one, we could decide if there's a conflict of interest? Would it be okay to get direction from the board first on two or three? Or did you feel we have to discuss that one first?
My opinion is, three is too much. We have five here, five, and I think we can make a decision from two.
Okay. What I'm going to ask for is first discussion on two or three, and then we can separate, separately discuss any conflicts of interest. If no further discussion, what I'd like to do, Chair Jordan, is just by a verbal and hand, hear from each board member going down, starting with Ms. Morgan, if the preference is to narrow it down to a finalist of two or three. Would that be acceptable?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Two.
Two? Vice Chair Vaughn?
Two.
Mrs. Gittens?
I'll go with the will of the board.
Okay. Chair Jordan?
Two.
Ms. Patrica?
Two, please.
Ms. Givinelli?
I'll go two.
Ms. Fisher?
Two.
Okay, so we'll have it seven to zero, we'll go with, we'll go with two. So today, the facilitation will be narrowed down to two finalists, we'll open it up to discussion on those two finalists, we'll bring them in for an in-person interview, we'll have to discuss the categories and questions, and we'll have discussion a little bit later after we narrow it down to those two, what those categories will be, and what the questions would be. With that, there was another discussion point. Vice Chair Vaughn, you brought up conflict of interest. Would now be the time, you want to discuss that?
I feel that with one of our board members, Mrs. Patrica, being the president of the Florida School Board Association, due to her obvious, very close association with that group, that she may have influence with the group in terms of the kinds of people they put forth to us, that, and it concerns me, and I've also heard from a number of constituents that express the same concern.
So just to clarify, are you asking that Mrs. Patrica wouldn't vote specifically for the Florida Board, Florida School Board Association, or are you asking that they wouldn't even be, the FSBA would not even be considered as one of these search firms?
I wouldn't consider them because, just, you know, just because a member that may have conflict of interest in voting for that group, which she did rate as number one, if that group were chosen, that's where my big concern lies, that she has close relationships, as a matter of fact, the woman, one of the signatures sent to us as a board, and I don't want to see that one of our board members might have an undue influence on candidates that are brought forward to us.
Okay. I'll open it up to discussion first, would ask Mrs. Patrica and Attorney DePree Bruno if you'd have a comment. Attorney DePree Bruno?
So with regards to the legal, legal conflict of interest, apparently a similar situation occurred in Sarasota, and a request was made by, to the Florida Commission on Ethics, whether or not there was a legal statutory conflict. And Chris Anderson, who is the executive director of the Florida Commission on Ethics, indicated that there was not a statutory conflict. Now, with regards to perceptions or anything else, I'll let the board make their own discussion on that.
Thank you for weighing in. Mrs. Patrica?
I mean, I can, I can under, and, you know, I know, I hear all the time, it's not what you say, it's how you say it, so please forgive me if I say this in a way that's insensitive. I'm just trying to boil down the issues. The suggestion that there would be a conflict, or that I would have undue influence, calls into question my ethics, and I take object to that. I have never used my influence, my personal influence, on anyone under any circumstances. When I sit at this board, I make decisions that are in the best interest of students, staff and the community. More importantly, it brings into question the ethics of the Florida School Boards Association and the people who conduct those searches, and there's an implication here that they would act unethically, and that they would allow me to unduly influence them. Finally, the suggestion that there would be a conflict of interest here illustrates to me a lack of understanding of my role at FSBA. I have absolutely nothing to do with superintendent searches. If you were to look at my calendar for last year, you would see the number of hours I've put in at FSBA, and it is a matter of attending legislative committee meetings, leadership committee meetings, Equity and Diversity Committee meetings, every committee under the sun. I sit there, and I listen, and I try to help create training that's better for school board members across the state, and advocate for public education in the state of Florida. It has nothing to do with superintendent searches. So to say that, I mean, I get it, coming from the public, you know, members of the public who sent emails with concern about this have told me personally that, really, their only interest in this is to raise questions with the public, they don't care about public education, they don't care about our students, they just want to raise questions and get people to show up to meetings. So I get that coming from the public, but to come from my own colleagues, it's offensive. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Mrs. Gittens, and then Ms. Fisher?
Okay, first of all, I would caution my colleagues from disparaging the public for whatever reason. I don't think that's our job and our duty to do that, and to determine why someone shows up at a meeting, or does not show up at a meeting, or their agenda, or whatever, they are still the public. And I just would caution us not to disparage people that do become a part of the process. And I know that it is sometimes frustrating to some, but we are a public entity, and I just don't think that it's a wise thing to disparage who and why and when people come. As far as FSBA, you know, we all talk to different people. And Ms. Patrica, the people that may talk to you from the public may be different than who talks to, you know, Ms. Vaughn, or Ms. Jordan, or to myself. And I think the perception is there, the fact, and someone described it to me as well, that you may not have a day-to-day, you know, connection with the staff at FSBA, but there are only a few members, paid members on the staff of FSBA, and as the chair, then those people basically are working for you and the committee. You set what they do, or standards, or you oversee, as the leader of the organization, you oversee what happens. I don't think it's saying that, at least for me, that anybody is unethical. It is, to me, the way it seems, the way it looks. And there is concern that it does look somewhat unethical. No one is pointing a finger and saying, you are, or this person is, overall, in a 300, you know, 5,000 degree view of it, not personality-wise, it does not look to be the most ethical.
Ms. Fisher?
I'm not going to comment on the disparaging thing. We always welcome public input, and need that, but we do need to consider our entire public. And some people are not able to vocally give their support at the right time. And so, moving forward, I'm going to say that we've been connected with Florida School Boards, or Florida School Boards Association, has been the educator, the ethics supporter, and helped with many searches and other public, I'm sorry, professional development in Florida for over 40 years. I think that I see no conflict at all, whether Lee County School Board has a representative as an officer of FSBA for a year, should have nothing to do with a superintendent search. And so, I would not support eliminating them from consideration because of their broad and long-term experience in superintendent searches, and their knowledge of Florida law, et cetera. So I would ask that we keep the personalities out of it, and that we look at it strictly from a business point of view, and look at the questions on the rubric that we had to answer, because I found that they had the most experience, the most knowledge of Florida, and they do have connections nationwide. And when I did my research on the firms, whenever we started to advertise, everything came back, even with a lot of the private firms, came back to Florida School Boards Association, and even with the National School Boards Association. They said, it just takes you right back to your local state school boards association, because they are the ones that have the knowledge and the expertise. So I would ask that we keep them in the mix. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Vaughn, did you have a comment? And then Chair Jordan?
Yeah, I had a couple responses. It's regretful that Ms. Patrica is offended by my very legitimate question about the possibility of conflict of interest, since, as Mr. DePree Bruno mentioned, it's already been looked at by other school boards, so what I'm saying is not a wild statement. I didn't say that it was illegal, that it was against statute, I'm just thinking of the kind of influence that one board member may have on people that she works so closely with, and is such good friends with. And I also want to take exception with what Ms. Fisher just said, that listen to the entire public. I listen to whoever puts out thoughts to me, and I can guarantee that often, 98% of what I'm hearing is not something that goes along with my own personal beliefs and ideologies, but it just happened that the comments that I did get completely meshed with my own view. So to say that, knowing my personality, to say that I am influenced by a small vocal majority, that just doesn't fly, and I'm offended by that, and I'm offended by the thought that there's some other agenda, rather than just looking at what's best and what's fair for this board and this school district.
Okay, thank you. Chair Jordan?
I was just going to piggyback on some of the things that Ms. Fisher said. I don't have a problem with the FSBA, because we are all members of the FSBA, all of us, each one of us up here. And I was with the Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association for years, they did excellent job for the needs of what, anytime we had issues with hospitality, they were our go-to, just as the FSBA is for us. I will say, when I was talking, because we've had this now for over a week, so I have had many conversations, and what really stuck out with me regarding the Florida School Board Association was the fact that they said they have a better pulse, they have a better pulse on Florida, and on Florida government and laws, the knowledge that they have regarding the needs and expectations of the school districts in Florida, that they make sure that they secure every walk of life, as far as bringing people in for the searches, and another, in creating the citizen screening, where everybody is engaged and that no one is left out. And when I called these, the people who have used them, the counties, they said they definitely exceeded what they thought that they would do, they well exceeded. And they also had comments, because they have used these other, some of the other firms that we had on this list, they had used them in the past, so they were able to share their thoughts on that as well. And I will say, too, when we're looking at all this, we have to make sure, too, that it's not just, what does that cost, because they're local, you know, I think the two gentlemen that really do the work, one is from Manatee, and one is from Seminole County, so all we're paying, we're not paying for flights, we're not paying for room fees, we're paying for their drive time, you know, as far as any extra expenses, so we have to take all of that into consideration as well. But I have no problem with them being one of them. And I know I have had a few people, you know, state, they didn't feel that it would be appropriate, and when I say a few, I had two. And then, as far as the rest of the community, they just want us to make sure that we are, you know, doing whatever we need to do to get the best person here. They don't care whose name is where, and when they bring these people here, they don't have, we have the control over the search firm, all of us. So I think we So, I think we have to make sure that we understand that. We tell them what we want, they bring the people to us. If we don't want them, we tell them, they don't tell us. So, I just think we have more control than what we're putting out there at this moment.
Thank you. Mrs. Giovinelli?
First, I'd just like to say that this has nothing to do with ethics. This just has to do with perception. So, and listening to the community, and I feel like that we need to have a better understanding of that aspect, really, and be respectful of that. But I have a different viewpoint. I feel like that FSBA is only focusing on educators, and I think we don't need just somebody that has a total education background. And that's why I would be opposed to FSBA, and that's why I didn't pick them, is because I feel like they focus just on educators. And I think we need a businessperson in here with experience, and I feel like that nationally, that a national firm would be able to find that right person. So, I want to focus more on a business experience and the side of it. And I actually think that we probably could use someone that runs the education side of the district, and then someone that runs the business side. And that's just my opinion, and I wanted to put that out here today, because I think that's what's really important, is to, because I think that's what's been lacking, is someone with business experience. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
At this point, what I'd like to suggest, and appreciate everyone's comments, since Attorney DePree Bruno shared that this would not be considered a statutory conflict, what I'd suggest is, I'll have Ms. Tortosa show the rankings, you all have them as well. I'll walk through them, and I would recommend we start a discussion on each one, so we could start narrowing it down. And each of you has, as you know, one vote, so you sit in the seat to decide if there would be a consensus of the board for any one of these search firms. So, if I could, I would just like to walk through the rankings, and then open it up to discussion. Ideally, we'll start narrowing it down, that we may just find there's one that we know we'd like to move forward with, and there may be one that we decide we don't want to move forward with. The intent now will be to narrow it down to five. So, let me just walk everyone through. There were eight categories. The eight categories were essentially picked based off of the ad that went out for the search firm, plus we added some pricing and references as categories. Each one essentially counted as five points, but each of you also sit in the seat to determine who is your top one and top two choices. So, I'd like to just walk through the rankings, and then open it up to discussion. Before I proceed, is there any other comment? Okay, Mrs. Gittens, and then Mrs. Morgan.
Let Ms. Morgan go, she hasn't waited.
Okay. Mrs. Morgan?
Well, I just want to comment on one thing that was said about FSBA. In their proposal, they say FSBA identifies and attracts candidates from non-traditional sources, such as private firms, nonprofit organizations, military, or other governmental agencies, if desired by the board.
Thank you. Mrs. Gittens?
Well, I just wanted to make sure to put in the minds of my colleagues as well, that I was reading through some information about school boards and selecting a superintendent, and someone sent me an article. And one of the statements was that one of the most important things that we do as a board is to select a superintendent. And I just want to hope that everyone has a broad view of this, that we broaden our scope. My concern about everything Florida and a pulse on Florida, that we're not expanding, and it's kind of along with what Ms. Giovinelli said about getting a businessperson. I think that if we're just looking at what we need right here, and what, I mean, what we have done, and what is happening in Florida, we're missing out on a big piece of the puzzle in order to broaden and to make what we do better, and not just do it in a vacuum of Florida. So, I'm just asking that you open, you know, your minds to the business perspective, the educational perspective, the fact of people having been in other areas besides Florida. Someone of the caliber we're looking for, they can learn the laws if they don't know them, but they cannot learn the experience of being in other districts and possibly bringing in different expertise that can help us see things that we may not have seen, because we're just looking at this level.
Thank you. Chair Jordan?
I guess I just want to clarify the law. As far as the pulse, I'm speaking, and I'm not trying to defend FSBA by no means, but they do, all the people that I spoke with, the FSBA did bring people from all walks of life, from all over the United States. And actually, some of these other people that we have here today actually use them to help them do searches as well. They help one another. But as far as, I'm talking about like the Sunshine laws and stuff that other people may not have, that Florida does have, and yes, everybody can learn that. But they do bring people in from all walks of life, as Ms. Morgan had stated, some of the people that they bring. And I know for a fact that when I watched the other, I watched some of the superintendent searches, and they were not from Florida. They were from outside of the region.
Thank you. Mrs. Patrica?
So, can we look to eliminate possibilities here, like to get started in the process?
Yes.
So, GRR recruiting, did anyone else pick up? In their executive summary, they referred to us as the Manhattan Beach Unified School District?
Yes. And for that reason, I really can't consider them. It indicates a significant lack of attention to detail, and I believe that we really need someone that's engaged with the Lee County School District primarily, and, you know, exclusively for this purpose. So, I would eliminate them up the bat, based on that. I did go through the rest of the packet, although I will say that the consideration they received from me after reading that was very low. The community input piece of their packet was very weak, and that's something that I believe we all want. So, I would be a thumbs down on GRR.
So, what I'd suggest is, what we could do is, I'll briefly go through each of the rankings, and then, Ms. Morgan, I'll turn over to you. I'll briefly go over each of the rankings, and then we could take the first order of business to narrow it down, and see if there's any firms we know we would not move into the top two. So, in alphabetical order, we had Florida School Boards Association, Ms. Fisher, Chair Jordan, and Mrs. Patrica, put them as top choice. And so, you'll see in the far-right column, there, three of the seven board members had Florida School Board Association within their top two. In this case, they were in the top one. GRR, Ms. Fisher, Mrs. Gittens, had them as number two, and so they had two board votes. HYA, Hazard, Young, Attia, and Associates, Mrs. Gittens as first choice, Mrs. Morgan as first choice, so two board members had them listed. McPherson and Jacobson, Ms. Giovinelli as the second choice, Vice Chair Vaughn as the second choice, so two board members chose them in their top two. And Ray and Associates, Ms. Giovinelli, top one. Vice Chair Jordan, top two. Mrs. Morgan, you'll see the asterisk there, and that was only because there was a tie for one. And so, actually, Ray and Associates was Mrs. Morgan's top choice. Mrs. Patrica, there was a tie for number two, and Ray and Associates was her preferred second choice. And Vice Chair Vaughn had Ray and Associates as her first choice. So, a total of five board members had Ray and Associates in their top, their top choice. So, what I'd suggest is, one is, we can have a dialogue on eliminating. You see now in terms of the ranking, Ray and Associates had five, Florida School Board Associates had three board members who chose them in the top two, and then the other three had two. So, we've had some discussion on Florida School Board Association. I'd like to recommend we start with some discussion going through each one. GRR recruiting. Any additional discussion? And, Mrs. Morgan, and then I know you had another comment as well?
No, my comment was on GRR. GRR does not work for me, because they've never done a superintendent search in Florida. They did do a CFO search for Hillsborough, but searching for a CFO is very different than searching for a superintendent who has got to be, well, an experienced, I think, leader, but also someone who I believe should be able to, they should be familiar with Florida Sunshine law, they should be familiar with the unique aspects of the superintendency in Florida. And since they have not recruited for that position in Florida, I'm a little uncomfortable. I am definitely uncomfortable with working with them.
Thank you. Other comments on GRR? I had Mrs. Gittens, and then Vice Chair Vaughn.
Yes. In my research and talking to people, I did find out that the GRR staff within, I think it was up until like last year, were a part of Ray and Associates. And that some of the Florida searches that were done by Ray and Associates were done by the personnel that is now GRR. So, I just wanted to make sure that that is out there, and as far as them not being a part of, you know, doing Florida is not quite accurate, because the reason, just like you'll see on their references, Hillsborough County Schools, and you'll see that on Ray and Associates, and they were involved in those Florida searches.
Thank you. Vice Chair Vaughn?
Yeah, I would vote to eliminate GR recruiting. To me, they had by far the weakest presentation. Nothing that really wowed me and made me think, "Oh, this is a really sharp organization." I think they're a distant fit to the others.
Since we're focusing on them right now, could I ask, Chair Jordan and Mrs. Giovinelli, do you have any additional comment on GRR?
I agree with not using them at all.
Okay. Mrs. Giovinelli?
Well, actually, it wasn't a pick of mine, but it was a pick of Ms. Fisher's. I would be curious what she saw in it, because she has the expertise of being the longest board member, and has been through this process, I think, how many times, Ms. Fisher?
Three recently, and then as an ancillary person several years back, before 2000.
It was one of her picks, and so I would be curious as to your expertise on that.
And it was exactly what Ms. Gittens said, that Gary Ray was the original Ray and Associates, and so now he, and they have extensive experience in Florida, as well as nationally. And sometimes when, I'm just more focused on the facts, and sometimes when people say less, it gets to me better. And so, I looked at the backgrounds of the people who work with them now, and I actually called a few people around the state who I had known, had some connections with Ray and Associates earlier on, and they do have a wide scope of experience. So, that was why I picked them, but I will certainly go with the will of the board.
I'd like to suggest we go through HYA and McPherson. They also had just two board members who picked them in the top two. And then, from there, we may be able to look if there's any of those three we would eliminate, again, just based on the number of board members who picked them within the top two. Feedback on HYA? We had Ms. Gittens and Ms. Morgan who chose them as first choice.
Ms. Morgan, you want to go first?
No, I'm looking at my notes. I was, may I go?
Yeah, Ms. Gittens.
I was impressed by the content, the presentation, and it wasn't that it was long, it was thorough. And one of the main things that, well, I did have one question. In one part, they talked about on the first page, that they will not recruit a person or pursue an application from a successful candidate employed by the board for three years. I wasn't quite sure on that, and that was one of the things that made me think, "We need to be able to talk to these people, and to find out what does that mean." I like the fact that they have choices, they have different advertising packages. And especially, I think, the, also the transition services. And I wanted to ask the question, is that included, or is that additional? But I like the idea of having the transition piece, not to just seagull approach, come in, help us, and then leave. There's a definite plan, business plan for follow-through. And I was very impressed by the way they did their references. They have extensive experience in all levels of, and sizes of school districts. And I, for example, I was looking to Indian River, I used to work there as an adjunct, so I know the extent of that school and that district. So, I was impressed by the fact that the information's right there. You want to know who we worked for, here's who we worked for, here's the size, here's who you can contact. And I think that type of information, to me, was helpful. Very clean, very concise, to me, it had a corporate feel to it. And some of the areas, I mean, from California to New York, they would have a broad perspective of what is needed, and yet they've worked in Florida as well, so they would know our policies and procedures and Sunshine laws.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And again, as we're having this facilitated dialogue, we'll get to two finalist candidates. What is helpful is if you know, you'll vote no, or yes, or still the will of the board, if you could share that as well, that'll make it easier as we're facilitating, and then, you know, move forward to either eliminating or picking. Ms. Morgan?
So, a lot of what Ms. Gittens said, I agree with. I thought the breadth of their experience, the professionalism, the thorough presentation, I just, I could imagine myself reading through their materials, I could imagine myself working with them. Now, full disclosure, I did a superintendent search with them in 1993, or '94. So, and they did, they were awesome, but that's obviously old news. They've been around a long time. They, but, yeah, so I just, I agree with Ms. Gittens. I thought it was a well-presented package of material. I liked the people they proposed working on the project, and as I said, I could walk myself through the process, reading their material. So, there you go.
Mrs. Patrica?
So, you guys know me, when there's a typo in the first sentence of the letter, I have an issue right off the bat. Several places in the packet, they referred to us as the Board of Education instead of the school board. And frequently, when I'm out with constituents and they refer to me as a member of the Board of Education, to me, it's an indication they come from someplace else, and they are more familiar with public education someplace else. So, that indicated to me a lack of understanding of Florida specifically. So, that indicated to me a lack of understanding of Florida specifically. They also referred to hiring a search process for an executive director in at least one place in the application, so my question is, are we hiring a superintendent or an executive director? They mentioned 1,400 hires, but how many of those were superintendents and how many were, quote, "other administrative positions"? No Florida office or location is evident. I wasn't clear on the cost here. It was hard for me to figure out exactly what this would cost us. And finally, only two of the firms that presented to us had the perspective of a school board member as part of the search team. Hazard was not one of them. I believe that school board member perspective is really important in the hiring, whatever firm we hire. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Chair Jordan?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. If I may. It's interesting that Ms. Gittens mentioned Indian River because Indian River fired them, you know, before the search process was completed in 2019, claiming sloppy work and a lack of professionalism in their interactions with them. So, the most recent experience they've had in Florida did not end well. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Chair Jordan?
I was going to say that. So, no, I don't have to say that part. And then also, I spoke to another county as I was calling for other ones, and they had, I asked them about these other search firms, and they had used them at one time, and they were not, what they said was, "We were not crazy about this one," is what their exact words were. But also, and I know that it was only two districts, school districts in Florida, I did try to call the numbers that they gave us, they were disconnected, could not reach them at all, so I did contact the school district itself. And then the concern of mine was truly, because they are not local people, so the cost, when I was trying to figure all this out as far as cost as well, it's kind of like, it's like a piecemeal. You can pick this, or you can pick that. Advertising only was like 97, $9,758, or you can customize it. Then you can go to, then it's 47, $47,758, and then other expenses is 3% of the fees, which I'm not sure what those fees were. And then advertising was, advertising is prepared and placed by the Board of Education, so I have no idea what in the world the end of the, at the end, what is that cost? And then fly time, I think this was the one who also was going to do surveys, engagements through Zoom. And then anytime you had, they had certain amount of days, and then any additional days were billed at $100, I mean, I'm sorry, $1,000 a day. So, it's, that to me, it was like a register just kept going and going and going as far as what is the end cost on this? What is the inclusive cost? What is it going to cost us in the end? Without us trying to figure out this piece, that piece, and putting it all together. So, that was my concern with this particular company.
Thank you. And again, and again, what's going to be helpful is, at the board's will, you'll choose two finalists. So, what I'm trying to get a sense from each board member now, before we select or we decide we don't want to select, which way you're leaning towards a certain firm, and then again, I'll move towards votes. Mrs. Morgan?
So, I'm, given the comments, I'm happy to move my choice from Hazard Young to FSBA because McPherson and Jacobson is not acceptable to me either. So, and I'm comfortable with Florida School Boards.
That's helpful, I appreciate that. It would, Vice Chair Vaughn, Mrs. Giovinelli, and Ms. Fisher, in that order, any thoughts one way or the other with HYA in terms of direction you're leaning before we do a vote or consensus? Any additional comments? Chair Vaughn?
If it's the will of the board, I could go with Hazard Young before a couple of the others.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Giovinelli, any additional comments?
I prefer the GRR recruiting over Hazard Young.
Okay. Ms. Fisher, any additional comments?
Yes, thank you. So, I discovered some of those facts that Ms. Jordan shared with us, and I did get some negative feedback from some of the people I was able to contact directly at the districts. And a lot of their experience was in the Northeast, which, with much smaller districts, and even some of those weren't all that positive, so that's why I didn't choose to go with Hazard Young.
Okay. If no other comments on HYA, I'd like to see if there's some feedback on McPherson and Jacobson. And then after, again, we have, those are our three search firms, we've had two board members who picked them, as you've had some discussion that has changed a little bit, so I'll go through that again. What we're looking to is to get consensus towards two finalists who you'll bring in for in-person interviews. So, the two who had selected McPherson, Mrs. Giovinelli had them as number two, and Vice Chair Vaughn as number two. Mrs. Giovinelli or Vice Chair Vaughn, any additional comments? Ms. Giovinelli?
I really like what they presented, however, I feel that they're very expensive, and that would cause me to pause. So, I think there's still, we have other options, and I think that I would prefer to go with the will of the board on that one, really. So, I don't have a problem taking it off. I mean, it was number two for me anyways. I was, I'm more impressed with the Ray and Associates, and I think I wasn't the only one there, so I'm going to hold out for that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Vaughn, any additional comments you don't need?
Yeah, I would be interested in my colleagues, the negative things that I, I was looking at, I liked the way that they laid out some of their information, the way they did board, excuse me, board tasks and their tasks, and just the way things were laid out, and I did not make phone calls. They talked about diversity in that they made a point in the past 10 years, one-third of the boards have placed women or ethnically diverse candidates. And if you're going back 10 years on that, I think they had some stats on five years as well, but even going back 10 years, it wasn't as, well, I don't know the right word, not popular, but I, my top choice actually was the mention of the diversity, and so it really stands out to me when a firm makes a point of not just the ethnically and racially diverse, but also women, because it, for instance, when we had our interim and we were looking at those candidates, it was rather surprising to me, the dearth of well-qualified women that we got there. And I'm just wondering if we're not overlooking, or, you know, I'm not sure how some firms come up with, it looks like where they advertise, more diverse applicants than others. Probably where they advertise, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Mrs. Patrica, and then Mrs. Gittens?
So, in response, if I may, to your question about negative, page 14 of their submission talks about keeping confidential applicant information, which is in direct violation of Florida sunshine laws. So, that indicated to me a significant lack of understanding of Florida law, and that, along with the fact that they don't have any school board member who's a part of their search team, you know, that was like the icing on the cake, but the primary reason is the lack of understanding of Florida sunshine law illustrated in the document that they submitted to us.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Gittens, and then Ms. Fisher?
One of my concerns with them, with McPherson, was the cost. And coupled with the fact that they, their references were mostly smaller districts, not a plethora of sizable districts. I applaud Ms. Vaughn for the comment about the diversity, and I do believe we need to look at that and evaluate that because we are a 60-40 majority-minority district. And I would like to ask that question of some of the people that we may decide to interview, what is your history of placing a diverse group of people? Or is it all, you know, kind of one-sided? So, we have to consider that. We're a majority-minority district, we can't forget it, and need to look at that possibility of expanding our scope.
I'll also put that down in terms of diversity as one of the categories you may choose to have questions for, for the interviews based on your comments. Go back if you have a comment, Vice Chair, and then I think Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, actually, what Ms. Gittens said just sparked something in my mind that I should have said. Just had an EDAC meeting, Equity and Diversity Committee meeting last week, and one of our members is involved with search firms at FGCU. And his comment was that, as a board, it's a very important question, just what Ms. Gittens said, that we ask the question of firms that we're considering, what is your history of placing diverse candidates in jobs? Because apparently, you know, it's the question I brought up before. I noticed that some of them, just listing some of the examples of places they advertised, I liked seeing that some go out and seem to look for qualified, well-qualified candidates that are minority, and I think that would be a very important consideration for us here in Lee County.
Yeah, very good. I've included that as a potential category in question. Ms. Jordan, and then Mrs. Morgan, and then-
I think Ms. Fisher.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher, and then Mrs. Morgan.
So, the only comments I have about that is, A, they are potentially the most expensive search firm, and when they showed their last five years of placements of school superintendents in the different states, one thing that glared to me was that Florida was not even on the list. So, I didn't select them for those and a few other reasons.
I'm seeing some consensus. Ms. Morgan, did you have any comments? And then Ms. Giovinelli?
Yeah, I agree that they have no Florida experience, and that rules them out for me.
Okay. Ms. Giovinelli, and then Vice Chair, and then Chair Jordan?
I actually saw that they didn't have Florida, but what I did see is that they had Fulton County in Georgia, which is very diverse, and I just, their list was very, I felt very diverse, from Arizona to some Illinoises. That was the reason, but they, like I said, they are the most expensive. To me, they were, they had, I mean, just the, I mean, let's face it, most districts are not as large as ours. That's, we're not the norm, we're kind of unique. So, I think regardless of this number of students, it's kind of irrelevant, it's the experience, and they definitely have the experience, and that's what I liked about it. But like I said, it's almost twice as much as some of the others, and that caused me to pause. So, I just, I'll go back to that.
Thank you. Chair Jordan?
Okay. I wanted to say, they were, actually, they're from Nebraska, they were the first ones to submit something to us back in April, April 20, April 22nd is when they sent that to us, Omaha, Nebraska. And so, they sent us a pamphlet on 4/22. At the last minute, they sent us, we called them numerous times to get something else other than the pamphlet from them, and then they were going to give it to us the next day, and we told them we had to have it by 4:00. So, we did finally get that from them. I will say, I definitely was concerned with the cost, it was 62.5, and that's for four trips only, four trips. Any other trips that would come here, that would be more money. And the last thing, and they did have, they did leave Florida off their list of what they had, but they had a separate page that showed two Florida, and I think that was their, was their selected references, where they added the two Florida schools. One was DuVall County, and one was Orange County. And when I talked to Orange County, they, the last time they were here was 2012. And then, even though they did a search firm, I mean, because they wanted a national search firm, but they wind up hiring the deputy superintendent on that one, so they didn't really bring people in. And, but what I did like, and maybe, and that's something I think we need to look forward to, maybe others, is the translating survey, is making sure that that's in multiple languages. So, if we do have them send something out to the residents in our community, that we do have it in multiple languages, so that they can definitely participate in this whole process. So, I did really, I did like that about them. I think there was, that was mentioned in a couple of these, but I think that's a good thing.
Thank you. For the three, GRR, HYA, and McPherson, based on just the discussion, I was able to count consensus. We'll go back and we'll take a consensus vote, but I was able to count that we'd have consensus that they would not be among the top two. I'll still like to walk through the other two, and then we'll see if we narrow it down, if we could still narrow it down, but just those three had at least four, four who were saying no. And actually, just so we go through it, it doesn't mean we won't go back, but let's just see if I confirm this correctly. I'd like to get a sense from each board member, if you'd like GRR in your top two based on this discussion, because we'll see if we can eliminate, if we can eliminate any now, and then we'll go to Ray and Associates and FSBA. Ray and Associates, at this point, has five board members with consensus, and Florida School Boards Association, with Mrs. Morgan changing, has four. So, let's just go through GRR. What I'm asking is just consensus, do you want them in your top two? Is that clear? So, Mrs. Morgan?
No.
Vice Chair Vaughn?
No, no.
Mrs. Gittens?
You're saying GRR and who else?
Just first GRR, we'll do one at a time. GRR, do you want them in your top two?
I still do, yes.
Chair Jordan?
No, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Ms. Gittens said.
She said yes.
She said yes, yeah?
Okay, and my answer is no, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Giovinelli?
I'm a yes.
Ms. Fisher?
I'll go with the majority.
Okay. So, that's going to be five to two, GRR would be no. Now, we're going to go through each one, and so if suddenly, you know, we need to go and look at consensus, again, we'll go back, but at this point, GRR will not be considered in the top two. Next, I'd like to go with Hazard Young, Atea, and Associates, to see if you'd like them in your top two, starting with you, Mrs. Morgan?
No.
Vice Chair Vaughn?
No.
Mrs. Gittens?
Yes.
Chair Jordan?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Thank you. So, HYA is a no with a six to one consensus on that. McPherson and Jacobson, starting with you, Mrs. Morgan, would you like them in your top two?
No.
Vice Chair Vaughn? Mrs. Gittens? Mrs. Gittens?
Yes.
Chair Jordan?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
No, thank you.
Thank you. That's a four to three. That would be no with McPherson and Associates. Now, that doesn't automatically mean the other two will have consensus. We have to still go through, but at least you've given me the consensus which direction you're going. I'd like us next to have discussion on Rain Associates. We have five board members who had them in their top one or two choices. Any discussion we could start with? No discussion? What I could ask, just go down the list to see if you'd like to have Rain Associates in your top two. The discussion? I'll start with you, Mrs. Morgan.
Yes.
Okay. Vice Chair Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Gittens?
There's only two left, so that leaves those two.
It does, but in case we don't get consensus, then we'll go back to see if, how they compare to GRR, HYA, and McPherson.
I'm a little confused, but process of elimination, yes.
Chair Jordan?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Okay, so, that's seven to zero. That's yes for Rain Associates to come in as one of the final two search firms to be The last one, and I know there was discussion, and we can have additional discussion, for the Florida School Boards Association. I currently have fi, four board members who have them as a preference for top two. Open it up to additional discussion. Not hearing any. Let me start with you, Ms. Morgan. Would you like Florida School Board Association in your top two?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vaughn?
No.
Mrs. Gittens?
No.
Chair Jordan?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Okay. That's four to three in favor of Florida School Board Association. So, that would be a yes for them to be in your final two. Any additional comments before we move to the process for bringing them in? If not, we have Rain Associates and Florida School Board Association as the two finalists?
That was not a consensus.
That was a consensus.
Excuse me, ma'am. We're only doing consensuses. This is a workshop.
And so, the, this is for consensus in terms of who you'd bring in? Is that right, Attorney DePree Bruno?
Yes, this is a consensus.
And so, based on that, Attorney DePree Bruno, based on the consensus, will those two be the two groups that the board would ask to come back in for an in-person interview?
If that is the desire of the board. If that's what they want, that they want these individuals to come in and do a...
So, what I, yeah, so what I'll do is, one last time, and Chair Jordan, let me know if this would be a vote or a consensus, just so I'm making sure I'm following the right protocol.
We cannot vote, so it is a consensus.
Okay.
And we would bring it to a vote at our, one of our meetings.
Perfect. Thank you.
But I think it is the will of the board to have, as they said earlier, to have the people come and present to us, so that way they're here in person, and then we can have that conversation with them at a briefing.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And so, would like to thank each of those search firms for submitting their information. I know they all put in a lot of time. And congratulations to Rain Associates and Florida School Board Association for being considered and meeting in person with the board in a date to be determined. The next steps would be to determine the categories and questions you'd like to ask, and at what date you'd like to have that meeting. So, I'd first like to suggest, similar to what you did with the superintendent rubric, that we pick categories. I could certainly share some suggestions. Pick categories and questions, and ideally, each board member would submit questions based on a category. And it can, or it doesn't have to be the seven categories, but would recommend that we pick the categories, have each board member pick a category, and then be assigned questions they'll provide for each category. Vice Chair Vaughn?
Yeah, I would like, before we even ask the questions for our final two, to, you know, maybe we can come up with a standardized list of pricing. Because quite frankly, you really had to, you know, it was easy to find the base price, but then it's already been brought up that travel costs most likely will be cheaper for FSBA. Although, I think, didn't Ray have, I don't remember, I don't have it in front of me, local people? I think they did. But anyway, things like travel, maybe list, kind of the, the Cliff, the Cliff Notes version of all of their pricing in one spot, so that we can, we don't have to go back and pick through.
Okay. Thank you. And Chair Jordan, I'll go back to you on that in terms of how we'd go about asking those firms for that information. Ms. Patrica, you had a comment?
Yes, and another piece of information I'd like in this is not about the interview. This is about information that I'd like heading into the interview. There was only one Florida reference listed in the Ray packet. Are there other Florida references? If so, who are they, and how can I reach out to those people? Because FSBA had a long list of Florida contacts, and Ray only had one. That I saw. Maybe I was wrong.
Chair Jordan?
They actually have, the searches that they were familiar with were Marion County, Hillsborough County, Lake County, Palm Beach, Brevard, and Collier. So, they do have history here. So, we can get that list.
But they're references. They only had one name with a telephone number for me to reach out to in Florida.
It's Ms. Gittens?
So, are we expecting each other to, to actually individually vet each of them and, and call and do all of that? I'm just asking that, and then I have one more statement.
Yeah, that's, that's the discussion for the board, the process you'd like to take in terms of how you'd like to vet these next two. We could certainly, you know, pick a date at the board's discretion when you'd like them to come in for the interview. But to your question, that's certainly a board decision.
Well, I mean, I guess, I'm, I'm just, anyway, I'll bring it up later. I'm just thinking about the vetting process, and are we all seven going to call all of these same people? But anyway, that's another thing. I'm kind of looking at, after reviewing all the different packets and the processes and everything that they use, I would like to look at our questioning or interviews with them to include, for one price, diversity we mentioned, their experience as far as working with either, you know, various sizes and, and just some of their experience in Florida, et cetera. The process or the phases that they will use, and the transition process. Some, I think it was Hazard, whichever it was, one of them did talk about a transition process. And I was impressed with that because, like I said before, it's not just come in and find you somebody and leave. When we look at their contractors and with the price, some of them included a guarantee that if the superintendent leaves within two years or something, that they will, you know, come back. So, in our pricing and our contract, I believe we need to look at that. And I would suggest we pick the best, out of all of these, the best attributes, and look at putting that together as, you know, the questioning. Because some of the ones we didn't choose had some good things that we might be able to use, and selecting the other two. So, price and contract, diversity, experience, process or phases, and transition process would be my suggestions.
And I'll briefly go over the categories we had as you came up with the ranking, and then call on Mrs. Morgan. You had services, range of offerings. We had budget, district size, their experience in Florida placements, the consultant's expertise, the ones who they would assign to this search, stakeholder engagement. We broke that into two components, given the importance, the engagement specific to the board, the engagement specific to the community at large, and then the strength of their references. So, those were the categories. Mrs. Morgan, you had a comment?
Yeah, with respect to process, there are two opportunities to include the community. One is in identifying what the characteristics are, what the community is looking for in terms of vision process, what they see in terms of what this community needs for a superintendent. And that, that becomes part of their compiling a job description or characteristics of a superintendent. And then the other opportunity is when we have narrowed the field down to a certain number of candidates. In my experience, candidates can be brought back, let's say you have two or three finalists, and they actually interview with the community in different forums. So, when we're talking about process and cost, I would like to see them break out how we, you know, how they would propose to engage the community in the first step, which is prior to identifying what the superintendent characteristics are, and then what the process would be for engaging the public when we have identified our finalists.
So, in terms of the, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens?
No, that's okay. The items that you listed were the categories we used when we select, we're selecting the interim?
No, those categories I just read were chosen based on the ad you put out for the search firm.
Well, okay. I, I just think we can condense it, make it a little more concise.
I would agree.
And I will send you my suggestions, and they can do whatever.
And one of the things I'll ask for is that we have those suggestions today, just to make sure we haven't narrowed down to the finalists, we picked the categories, the questions we can ask each of you to send them in advance, and, and then do what we've done in the, with the superintendent, and just have the time that each of them would present, and the questions would be asked. Ms. Patrica, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was going to say, there are, you've broken this down into eight categories. The final category is references. So, why don't, why doesn't each one of us take a category and submit questions to you based on that? Because references is going to be something each of us individually will engage in, but the other seven categories, I think that's what we did with the interim, right? We looked at the rubric that we used to narrow the candidates based on applications, and then we each submitted questions in those categories, right? Am I remembering that correctly?
That's correct. Mrs. Gittens?
And that's correct, but what I was just suggesting is that we revisit that, those categories to make them a little more concise. I would like to submit for your, at least viewing, to see if it's a possibility, before we just use what we've already used and assign questions. And I thought that's what Mr. Cashman just said, for us to send in.
Yeah, what I was suggesting is that today, at this meeting, we narrow down the categories you'd like, that you'd recommend, and we do that, we do that here at this workshop. And then separately, the questions would be submitted, because the questions wouldn't be viewed by the search firms in advance. So, it would just be your preference to narrow down the categories. And what I heard you speak to is pricing and process, and those can probably be consolidated within these categories. The importance of including their experience in placing diverse candidates, and we can include that in these categories, and then the questions could follow. So, I'd like to suggest, you know, let's, let's, for example, start with, just picking one of these at a time. The stakeholder engagement, I heard that all throughout the superintendent process, the importance of engaging the board, the importance of engaging the community. So, I'd like to suggest we break those into two categories, just for discussion, and then see if we can, if we can put additional information you'd like in there, whether it's process or other information that would, would help bring this together. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, can you just clarify that? Are we talking about stakeholder engagement in choosing one of the two finalists for a firm? Or are we talking about stakeholder engagement when we are entertaining the applications for superintendent?
Thank you. The category would be getting the search firm's experience in, in getting community engagement pertaining to the superintendent's search firm. So, I put out their stakeholder engagement as one of the categories. Thoughts?
Yeah, I like the way you have it broken down here on the screening tool. There's one category for the board, and there's one category for the community. Because I think the engagement with the board will be different from the engagement with the community.
That's correct. So, I broke those out, you know, essentially that it would count as, you know, it adds more points and adds more weight to overall engagement by breaking it into those two categories. So, any concern in leaving engagement with the board, and then stakeholder engagement with the community as two separate categories. I would also suggest no more than seven, just given the fact that there's seven board Comments on the stakeholder engagement, or suggestions on an additional category you'd like to see? And again, you could start with these, or you could make a recommendation on other categories you'd like. I'll read through them just one more time.
Do we have that document? I'm sorry. Is, Ms. Patrica mentioned a document. Is there a document that shows what you're talking about?
We all completed it and submitted it.
It's the rubric.
It's the rubric.
Okay. It's the rubric.
Sorry, these were the categories you submitted back. And so, that rubric included...
I didn't know you were talking about the rubric. Thank you.
That rubric included the services, range of offerings, the budget, their experience specific to the district size, their experience specific to Florida placements, the experience specific to the consultant expertise who would be leading the search. And then we've already gone to the, through the two categories on stakeholder engagement, and the eighth one was specific to their references. Would you like to keep those seven I listed, and then have references that can, would be checked separately? Ms. Patrica?
I would, and I'd like to ask whether, under experienced district size, we want to add diversity there? Or do we want whichever board member takes experienced consultant expertise to create questions surrounding diversity under that category? Because the size really doesn't tell me anything if it is, you know, the district I came from in New York was 4% pre-reduced lunch. So, although it was an incredibly diverse community, it was not diverse economically. Am I making sense? So, we can, we can fit it into either category. I'm just wondering what the board's appetite is with regard to that.
Yeah, that's a big issue.
Thank you. Comments? Suggestions? Vice Chair Vaughn?
Yeah, I would go back to what the constituents said in the EDAC meeting, suggesting that we ask for... we ask for their history with bringing forth candidates that, women, and ethnic, and racial diversity.
Okay, so I think it's two separate questions. So one is the diversity of the school district with which they worked, and the other is the diversity of the candidates that were brought forward by the search firm. So I think there are two separate questions.
And just a reminder to go through the chair.
Well, let's take it, let's take it one at a time to see if we've got this right. So one, the category would be range of offerings. And they offer broad range of expertise and services with proven track record for successfully placing leaders in education. I can leave that as is, and I can also add, again, to any of these, the right wording on ensuring that they have experience placing diverse, candidates with diverse backgrounds. Mrs. Gittens?
I don't know. I, some of, the way the questions were written, to me, I understand the major categories, the service and range of offerings and budget, et cetera, et cetera. But the questions tended to be a little confusing. If we're looking at broad range of expertise and services, okay, that's one thing. Proven track record, a successful, that, to me, is under references. And to me, the range of services does not include all of that. It includes the price, the contract, the, you know, what it is you're, basically, what are you saying? And then the second, and what are you going to do? The second, the budget, is pretty clear. The district size and experience, that, to me, would be where you would put the additional piece about diversity. District size and, I mean, maybe size and diversity of the district.
Okay.
And I don't know, it just seems to, some of the things seem redundant. I know I was struggling with, when I was using the rubric as to the questions, and did I answer this already? I just, I think it's verbose, is what I'm saying.
If we had a suggestion, for the first category, keep it to broad range of expertise and services. And keep in mind that each, each of you, if you picked one category, would come up with the questions, let's say, three questions in each category. So to make it less verbose, if it was broad range of expertise and services would be the first one. Second is their prices as competitive for services offered. Third could be experience with this size district and placement of diverse candidates. And again, I'll go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Can we just say then, experience, size, and diversity?
Experience, size, and diversity?
On which one?
You know.
On which one?
On the experience that says district size. And what I'm saying is, you could say comparable size and diversity of school districts. In other words, we're trying to find out, have you worked with districts our size and with the diversity that, that we have, that, you know, so you know exactly.
Okay. Mrs. Morgan, and then Mrs. Patrica.
So I think it's really, it's demographics, district size and demographics.
Right, there you go.
And then, then diversity comes into the kind of candidate pools they develop. Does that make sense?
And where would you put that? I'm sorry, may I, where would you put the, I agree with you, the district size and demographics is great. I like that.
Okay, and I do think what you want to bring in, the diversity of the pool that they present, and I don't know.
Maybe that could be, though, under that experience, district size, demographics, and whatever. And I agree with you saying that if we all had three questions, that under that section, whoever has that would make sure to ask questions about that. But I think the demographics will pick it out.
One additional suggestion to put out there, your thoughts, if you did not want to put it within district size and demographic, which I've captured, if you put it under experience in Florida placements, and then experience with placing diverse candidates.
Under experience and process?
Specific to experience with Florida placements.
Right. Consultant expertise?
The consultant expertise.
Right, under, yes, I agree.
Consultant expertise, okay. Vice Chair Vaughn?
Yeah, two, two things. We're putting such a big emphasis on Florida placement. I'm not sure why. We're, you know, of course, we have the sunshine laws and that sort of thing, but I don't understand why that is so important. For instance, when I was looking at Ray and Associates, and I know, you know, they're one of the two firms we're going to be looking at, I was looking at, since I lived in Texas for so long, I was looking at the districts that they served in Texas. One of them was my old school district, another Plano ISD, and they, I was impressed with some of the districts that chose them, and I thought, oh, okay, it looks like, even though it wasn't Florida, it's still the South. They focused on, everybody's looking for the best fit for their district, and that's why, I don't know why we're so focused on, on the Florida thing. That's one thing. May I suggest that we just list all of these things, and then when we come out with 11 or 12, see which ones we want to eliminate, or which ones we can combine, instead of trying to edit as we're going along. And then my third comment is, I think it's really important to look at the steps and how to contrast, compare and contrast the two groups, and especially their initial steps, because, and I may be misunderstanding this, FSBA talks about begin our search process with a pre-search interview workshop. And in Ray, for stage one, under board, it says, provide individual input for the profile development. And I think that's, that's an important differentiation. I think that a firm is going to need to start, especially a board as diverse as this one, they're going to have to get a good handle on the fact that there's a definite divide in two or three pieces on what we want as individuals. And I think it's important to talk to us as individuals, and for them to come up with the commonalities, and the realization that, you know, they might be looking for several different things. So I think that initial step of, you know, we've already talked about firms' board engagement, but that's awfully broad. There's going to be a couple different areas, for me, I think, to differentiate, that need to be differentiated sections, on what, what's your best process in starting this process to understand what we're looking for? And I know there's also the idea that, and we haven't done this yet as a group, we've talked about tweaking and changing some things in our own description for our superintendent. Is that something that we want to do ourselves as a board? Or is that something, and if we're paying these guys, and they have expertise, is it something that we want them, FSBA and Ray and Associates, to help us evaluate? So I think the foundation, if we screw up with the foundation, I think it's going to make us a really rocky road for the future. So somehow, I feel like all of that needs to be reflected in what we evaluate on these two firms.
Thank you. Some of the things I was able to capture as you were sharing your thoughts. We'll narrow it down to seven categories, even if we have 11 categories. Your comment in terms of the Florida placement, that was brought up, it certainly would be at the board's direction, whether that's important or not. As you brought up, for example, the job description, for now, I just put that as a placeholder with a broad range of expertise and services. That may be one of the questions that gets included from the board member to ask, would that be included in putting together job descriptions? I did, for now, put the diverse candidate selection in a separate category, and I can walk through the ones that I have so far. I think that captures what you were speaking to so far.
And initial steps, that's, to me, the really, really important thing, and I guess, not I guess, that we as a board are going to have to decide, when these two firms come in and talk with us, are we already going to have our job description for the superintendent tweaked and changed as we want it? Or are we going to ask them to help us look at what we have and do some changes based on that? So I think that's really important.
Yeah, it is. And I also included, as you brought up, the stakeholder engagement. I included that as, I would recommend stakeholder engagement differentiation for the board to consider, stakeholder, specific to the community and the board. So just, again, I'll ask for each of you to give consensus on those, but that may allow them to think a little bit differently in how they're differentiating. And I have also included the process through this whole selection of the superintendent. Did I see Mrs. Gittens, and Mrs. Javonelli, did I see your hand? Okay, Mrs. Gittens?
I did have mine up, because as I have said, like a broken record from the beginning, we have to start with what are we looking for? And I have said before that we need to look at the job description, the evaluation form, anything that has to do with evaluating the superintendent position, and come up with what we want. And as I was reading through the, the applications, most of them did say, the first thing, is to meet with us and to talk about what does that look like? You know, what are we looking for? We have to start there. And I believe that to make it more palatable and easier going forward, that we need to workshop that. We need to look at, here are the objectives right now. Do we keep this? Do we reword this? Do we change this? And I would have loved to have had the opportunity to do that with Dr. Atkins here, to be able to give his input as well, as to if he were to change some things, what would it be? So I think that piece, before we bring in somebody else, if we don't know what we want, how are we looking at them to be able to do that? And I know they're going to help us tweak it, but I think we need to really know this is what we're looking for, so that as we're talking to these people, we have some idea that they're going to fulfill that need.
And that's something, that as you're looking at the categories, it could be included, you could include it in your request, that you'd want to make sure they're helping walk through the clarity of the job description, the eval forms, to make sure it's in line with what, what you're looking for.
And if I may say, that's under process then. And that could be one of the questions under process.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan.
Yeah, so I agree that we have to, we have to redo the job description evaluation, but I think it has to take place after we do community focus groups, because I think for us to do a job description and evaluation tool without getting community input, it is, it is our employee, but I think we have an obligation to listen to what the public has to say, particularly since we've had such poor success with respect to superintendent supervision and evaluation over the past 10 years. So, but, and I think a firm can help us with that, but I think it's got to take place after we've done the initial community engagement. We can certainly, once we've, once we've done the, the community part, then we can have a workshop. And then from that workshop, we will know what it is we're searching for. So that would be my suggestion.
I'm sorry, may I respond to that?
Other things, I'm just going to update, based on the feedback you've provided, as a category, would be the process, including each step, and clarity of the role and expectations. Again, it can be shaped, but I'm just, I've included that under the process category. Other comments, Mrs. Gittens?
Well, just to respond to that really quickly, and I totally agree with Mrs. Morgan. As we look through the process, most of the ones that were in the top realm had that as a part of it, and the community was a part of that process. They either did, we did a revision, and then took it to the community, and then came back to us, or they did the community first. And I'm thinking, if we know that there are things we need to adjust, that maybe we should adjust them first, and then say to the community, we've heard you before, we've changed this, now what do you think about it? And having their input. But there, the community input was a part of most of them anyway.
Okay, I'll see if there's some additional comments, and then I'll see if I've captured the categories, and then we could assign the categories ahead. Ms. Fisher, and then Mrs. Patrica.
So in the profiles by both Ray and Associates and Florida School Boards Association, they do talk about involving staff, community, in the development of an accurate profile for the position. So I think that the first step is to choose the, you know, choose these people, and then have them come and make their presentations. And those are some questions that we can ask for clarification, but it looked to me like in both of those proposals, they're saying that the process will be developed following their initial meetings with us, and including those stakeholder groups. So I think, we don't want to put the horse before the cart, but, you know, let's take it one step at a time.
Okay. Mrs. Patrica?
I, I'm not really clear on what we're doing, or what we're discussing, and what consensus we're trying to reach.
So what we're narrowing it down to is getting it down to seven categories, recommending each board member picks one category, take 10 minutes for each category to ask questions. Last time it worked out, asking three questions, so they all get asked the same question. Suggest, based on what we did with superintendent, we give them five minutes upfront to share an overview of their company, five minutes on the back end to have some closing remarks. So what I could do is walk you through the categories I've captured based on this discussion, and then if those sound good to you, we'll get those in writing to you. And also would like to have, if okay with the board, each of you would pick a category where you would take lead on the questions asked. So taking it one, does that give clarity, Ms. Patrica?
It does, and I'll ask my next question at the end.
Okay. So let me walk through the seven categories based on what I'm hearing. First is the broad range of expertise and services. Again, these will be broad categories, and the questions would come from each board member. So I'd like consensus on broad range of expertise and services. The second is experience placing diverse candidates. Third is the budget. Third is the budget, budget and pricing. Fourth is their process, including each step and clarity of role and expectations, or I could keep it just to their process. The fifth is stakeholder differentiation, stakeholder engagement specific to the board, stakeholder engagements specific to the community, those are two different categories, and we would have that those would be differentiations for them. So it would be worded to include differentiation. The last one is their expertise, their experience specific to the district and size, and the consultant will be lead on the search. Any thoughts, Ms. Patrica?
So experience in placing diverse candidates, that's on a board, that's not on the search firm. I think experience in bringing forth a diverse panel of candidates or a diverse, I don't know if panel is the right word, but you get the point. You know, they narrow it down to 10, 15 candidates. Are those diverse candidates? You can't hold the search firm accountable for what a school, for who a school board hires. And then the other thing is, you were reading, and I read and understand better, so when you talked about size of a district, where is the demographics of the district mentioned in this?
I could put that in there.
Okay, thank you.
District size and demographics. So I'll take one at a time. Broad range of expertise and services, any concerns? Second is experience bringing diverse candidates.
Okay, so you didn't say experience placing, sorry.
I did, I did, and I changed that.
Okay, thank you.
Based on your feedback. Experience bringing diverse candidates.
Which one, I'm sorry, Mr. Cashman, may I? Okay, I'm following it on the way it's listed here, and you switched the order.
Right, so now I'm reading based on some of the feedback because we've changed around some of the categories. So.
Okay, and I think, I would feel more comfortable seeing the new, you know, layout of it and the verbiage, like we changed the first one to offers broad range of expertise. We changed the experience to district size, demographics and diversity. Process stayed the same, expertise, we took out some stuff. I'm just, anyway.
So let me ask a question. I have a question for Attorney DePree Bruno. If we have the broad categories and we assign the broad categories, would it be appropriate if the board member who picks the category not only comes up with questions, but if there's some wordsmithing, they can also decide that as well?
I don't see any problem with that.
Okay. So then it would give, based, what you just shared, Mrs. Gittens, I could share these broad categories, but then you'd have a chance to think on this a little bit more, could tighten up if you wanted it worded a little bit differently. It still would reflect the general category, but it would give you the opportunity to just wordsmith as you see fit and add the questions. The key is right now that we'd capture the broad category, assign the broad category, and then that board member could choose to reword the category, still keeping in line with the intended definition, and provide the questions. So with that, I can walk through them one more time?
Yes, I mean, I agree with that, that's fine. And the comments that you were making were good, I just wasn't sure where you were on the continuum.
Okay. And so what I'll do is I'll walk through, and then I'd like to see if any of you have a preference on a category. And again, I want to be sensitive to time as well, but see if any of you have preference to category. Vice Chair Vaughn?
Okay, let's go back to, I think you had one on process.
Correct.
That's so important that I think we need to have a division there. The initial process, the initial process of learning what we as individuals, what we as a board think, what staff thinks, what stakeholders think, and just kind of getting the whole thing done. Then the next big step, I mean, if you just divide it in two, would be having the candidates presented to us, and they're going to be doing vetting, they're going to be, I don't remember how, if it's just for the final, but I think for, when we narrow it down, they're going to be looking at references with, you know, checks to make sure the person doesn't have any legal difficulty, history, those kinds of things. So it just seems to me, it's such a big process, that we've got initial things, and then we've got, once we've narrowed, what they do for us in terms of checking out and vetting our finalists.
Well, at the board's direction, we could certainly break that into two categories. And if you wanted to keep it to seven categories, you could take.
But that first, not, I'm sorry, but that first, we've already, what was the first? The broad range of services?
The broad range of expertise and services.
We've already said both of these firms have a broad range. Now, isn't it our job to really focus in on these broad range? And what do you do during this, these first early things? What do you do once we've narrowed? How do, you know, so I think it's kind of a useless first thing, because we wouldn't have picked these two if they didn't have the broad range.
And we could certainly take that out of the board's direction.
I'd rather have two categories for process, at least two.
Vice Chair Jordan?
I'm going to throw a wrench in it all.
Okay.
What I, because to me, I believe that once we have, and it's just like we did with our auditors as well, they came in and they did a presentation of who, what, where, why, and how, which is all their processing, it's everything that they do, it's meeting with the board members, it's the initial process, the ending process, and they will go through everything that they've sent to us. So I think we have to give them that opportunity to tell us who and what they actually do. Then after we've listened to all of that, then we would have an opportunity to ask questions that would.
That wasn't answered in the presentation.
That they did not answer at the time that they did their presentation. Because to me, if we're just asking three questions, we're not giving them the opportunity to really tell people, what is it that, this is what we do.
Thank you.
We, and I know that this was all sounding wonderful, but I'm just envisioning these people coming here and trying to do a presentation to us. It's a sales pitch, of course, because they want to, you know, show their best, and they want to make sure that we hear everything that, and we can, we can send forward to them ahead of time, you know, some of the questions that you all had spoke about as far as the breakdown in the process, because if you look at both of them, they say they work with the board as far as the pricing, so they're not going to be able to give us an inclusive cost, there's no way in the world that they can give that to us. But they can give us, you know, what everybody had asked for as far as the experience, the diversity, all of that, if we send that in advance to them, saying this is something that we as a board really want, as well as what you have done, this is really important to us, the stakeholder engagement, everything that, helping with the job description, all of that, if we forward that in advance to them, they can be prepared to have that conversation with us, as well as everything else that they do. And then we can move on and ask the questions. Sorry.
Yeah, so the recommendation there would be, and then Ms. Giovinelli and then Ms. Fisher, so the recommendation, what you're sharing is, allow them the time to come in and give a presentation, let's say it was a 45-minute presentation, and then a period of time, you know, with a cutoff, allowing the board to ask questions in response to their presentation. Am I hearing that correctly?
That's how I would love to see it, and I appreciate everybody's comments on this, but if we already know in advance, those questions that are near and dear to our heart, that we want them to answer, we can forward that to them in advance, so they can be prepared to answer those questions.
Okay, so I'll put that back out to the board for consensus. Ms. Giovinelli and then Ms. Fisher?
That's exactly what I envisioned, Ms. Jordan, so thank you, because I felt like we were doing questions, but I think we should have, basically, they should have their presentation, which is like a briefing for us, and we ask our questions then. We can send them criteria that we want to make sure they meet those points prior to their, and so they have an insight. I mean, that is something we certainly can do to both, but I don't see all these questions and categories pertinent at this point in time. I mean, I think it's just really important to get the presentation behind us, then we ask questions, and for the community to see the individuals and help us decide who we're going to pick for a firm. This is just a firm, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher and then Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, I don't want to be redundant, but both of these firms have indicated in writing that that's exactly what they do. They work with the school board to determine the candidates, and based on the job description and position requirements, and in collaboration with the school board, they take the next steps. So I think that once we have the presentation and we have them here in person, we have an opportunity to ask them questions, and then as a group, let them know what are our priorities. And we could send them some of those criteria in advance, as Ms. Jordan and Mrs. Giovinelli requested. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yes, I just want to make sure we're going to use the rubric to evaluate, so that we have a common understanding.
Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, and yes, that's what I was going to say as well, and breaking it down to me is basically offers a broad range of services, number two is budget, number three is experience with size, demographic, diversity, number three, number four, process, provide a clear process and timeline. Number four is about the lead consultants, number, I mean, five. Number six is working with the board, then working with the community and references. And I think that we could use that simplistically as we're listening to their presentations as well, as kind of a rubric to guide us along. And, I mean, I think it's just simple, and then when we come back to if we're going to do any questions or whatever, it can still fit under these simple categories.
And so what I'm hearing is, moving towards consensus, allowing them to come in, provide a presentation, pick a period of time, let's say it was 45 minutes, and then a period of time, the board would ask questions. We could keep it to the general rubric that was put together for the selection, and Ms. Gittens just went through that, and I can, I could send it out, this rubric out to the group again, and you could, and Attorney DePree Bruno, let me know just from a process standpoint if this is okay, if I share what I believe we've captured here today in terms of the rubric, what you'll be listening to in their presentation, then the board can give feedback, and then we could send the final back out to the board if there was some additional feedback.
So long as the feedback is sent to Mr. Cashman and I?
Correct. I would send you this based on what we just shared here, so you're looking at it again, see if we've captured, if I missed anything, send it to me and Attorney DePree Bruno. We'll get the final back out to everybody, we'll pick a date for that. But if I'm hearing consensus right, and I could just go through, but okay, Vice Chair Jordan, to just ask, give the presentation, allow the board to have questions, and measured against the criteria and the rubric. Is that what I'm hearing, board consensus, Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vaughn? So it'd be presentation plus questions?
I can live with that.
Mrs. Gittens?
Yes, and I'd just send it out what I just said, so they can look at it and you can have it as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Chair Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher? Okay, so Chair Jordan, I'll ask for you in terms of, one is you probably want to pick a date for them to come in, and then just finalize whether we would allow them 45 minutes and a certain period of time for questions, just so we have the same process for both on the same day.
Okay, and then if I may, I know there were certain questions, so if someone could send those, I guess, to yourself or Mr. DePree Bruno, the questions that we would like to have them, as far as the diversity, exactly how that, they want that framed for the experience and diversity, again, the cost, they'll definitely speak on that. If there's anything that we specifically want them to speak on, as well as what they have here, we could send that to them ahead of time, so that way they can be prepared to speak on whatever those items are for us. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? Okay, so.
It does, but here's the thing, I think what they need ahead, may I?
Yes.
What they need ahead of time is to know, as a professional organization, you're going to come and present to us.
Okay, so the items that you all spoke about, that was really important, you don't, as far as the.
Well, no, and then if we have, then we can ask them questions.
Okay.
After they present, is where, in my mind, that the rubric comes in.
Perfect.
And we ask these, you know, put questions to this document, and then we can ask them as a follow-up. But what I'm saying is, if we have this rubric while we're listening to them, we may get some of the answers ahead of time, so.
Gotcha.
Ms. Patrica?
And frankly, I think it's on the firms to know us well enough to know what we want and what our areas of concern are. I don't think we need to reach out to them and say we have questions about the diversity of the panel of candidates you bring and all that, it's on them to know us if they want us to hire them. So we tell them we want a presentation, and we're going to have questions afterwards, period.
Right. Perfect.
And Ms. Patrica, as you say that, for the board to evaluate them, I'll still send out the rubric with the categories for you to give any feedback to me and Attorney DePree Bruno.
Hundred percent. I'm just talking about contacting these two firms and giving them a heads up about our areas of concern. I think they need to figure that out. Right, am I making sense?
Yeah, you are. And so, Attorney DePree Bruno?
Chairman, may I recommend that this be held at a briefing to allow public comment?
It would be at a briefing. That's correct.
Do we need to, Chair Jordan, do we need to pick a date when that could occur?
We'll have to reach out to the two companies to see when they both can be here.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
That leads to my last question that I didn't want to ask earlier. Will you continue to be engaged through that process? I feel like we still need you to.
Okay.
Because when you step away from the table, we devolve, but while you're here, you're able to keep us on track. So I would like board consensus to keep you engaged until we hire a firm.
I think we have asked him to do that at our last meeting.
Okay.
If he would be involved with us until we reach that point with the search committee.
Right.
I'd be glad to, that's what the board would like. Attorney DePree Bruno?
I would like directive from the board to amend Mr. Cashman's contract, because it's going to go past this month, so I would need some direction.
Okay, do we have consensus on doing that? I know we have asked him to help us to the point of getting the search firm, so if it does go beyond this month, we would need to do that. If we can work it all into this month, then we're okay. Correct?
You'll be covered, but if it's going to go into July, because he's covered it for May and June.
Correct.
So we would need to do an amendment to the contract or an addendum to the contract.
Do we have consensus on that? Ms. Morgan? Ms. Vaughn?
Frankly, it's hard to give consensus, because I'd like to see where we are with the cost. I can live with it.
Ms. Gittens? That's if we extend it to another month. We're going to try to get it.
Okay, and I understand, I think what we need to do now is to regroup and do a timeline for ourselves up to the point of, so that we can say to one of these two companies, here's where we're at, here's when we want to start, and then it's up to them to decide, can they make that work, working for us? So I think we need to be a little more concise and set ourselves a timeline. So, I, I think we, we need to be a little more concise and set ourselves a timeline. That way we'll know how long, pretty much, we would need Mr. Cashman.
Okay, and we, we actually, if we could get them here, we actually could do this with the advertisement and everything like that, we could actually do it the next, because you have to put it on for Board docs and everything else like that. So we would be able to get this in on the 28th or the 30th of this month, actually.
And can't we also do a special meeting if we need to?
Yes, and that's, we could do that between those two days, 28th and the 30th.
I'm for getting on with it, putting it down, and trying to wrap this up by the end of the month.
Okay.
But if we can't, if one of these firms can't make it between now and the end of the month, I, I'd like to know that we're going to have the services of Mr. Cashman on the second or third of July, should that be needed. You know, I'm not, I'm not talking about extending this process any longer than it has to be extended, I'm just guaranteeing and ensuring that we are going to continue to engage Mr. Cashman regardless of the date that meeting takes place.
So, would you want to wait to the end of the month to see if that works, until, see if we can get this done, and then revisit this?
I, I, whatever the board decides, I'm just letting you know that if it goes past June 30th, and technically speaking, you're beyond the scope of his work, because now we're doing the search firm, but definitely if it goes back June, past June 30th, he will need to have an addendum.
Correct.
So, we were starting to take a consensus, can we finish that and move on?
So, as far as, if, if needed, if it go beyond the 30th of this month, we have a consensus to amend the, Mr. Cashman's contract to help us fulfill the rest of that, even if it's two days after. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Well, I have a question. So what are we going to need his services for? That's what I'm trying to figure out. What's the, what, what, where's the need here, exactly?
It would be to help...
Do what?
Facilitate us bringing them in, or the search firms in, and helping us go through the rubric, and then that's it. Then the search firms take over.
Well, helping us pick a search firm, too. The facilitation of that discussion.
Okay, so, the next time we can vote will be in, on July 26th, so...
We actually...
Next meeting is July 26th.
Unless we do an action meeting, which we can do that, and we could do that on the 30th, we have enough time, because I, we looked at the calendar this morning, I, Jen and I looked at the calendar, see where, how, how we could make this work within the timeframes of advertising and all of that, and we could do it at, like, an action meeting on the 30th, where we could have a briefing on, say, on the 28th, if we could get people in, and then do, because I know everybody wants to move forward, so I'm trying to move this forward. So we could virtually get it done by the end of this month.
Pick a search firm.
Correct. And then the search firm then would take over, of course, then they would be the, the people, once we've committed to them, then we would thank Mr. Cashman for everything he has done, and the search firm will take over the next endeavor.
I mean, if it goes a couple days, I can, I can live with that. I mean, it's just hourly rate at that point, my understanding, is that correct?
Yes.
Have to discuss that with Mr. Cashman.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, this is taxpayer dollars we were just talking about, so I mean, I think it's, need to be, it needs to be discussed. I can live with that, I mean, but, you know...
And that's why we're trying to expedite it, so, because of that reason.
We're running out of time, but...
Thank you, Ms. Giavennelli. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, and in light of the success we've had with Mr. Cashman facilitating these recent meetings, I'm an absolute yes.
Okay, thank you. So that would be consensus on that. Okay, so, Mr. Cashman?
Yeah, I'll turn it back over to you in a moment. So what we're hearing is we have consensus, we'll bring in the two firms to provide a presentation, we'll look to close that up ideally no later than the end of the month, we'll extend it further if needed, but ideally look to get it done by the end of the month. You'd ask them to come in, provide a presentation, there'd be the time for questions, we'd allow the same for both companies, both the same amount of time to present and to receive questions. I'll send the updated rubric to each of you, so you would know what you're evaluating them against. If you could send any comments to me and Attorney DePree Bruno, that would be appreciated, and we'll put that in writing. On that, I've appreciated going through this process with you, and I'll turn it back over to you. Chair Jordan?
Thank you so much. So, is, are there any questions, any other questions regarding where we're at in the process for the search firm? Seeing none, we're going to take a real quick break, and then we'll come back and speak on the five-minute break, and then we'll come back and speak on our auditor's information.
Thank you.
Thank you. No...
I'm passing up a steak lunch for you guys.
Okay, we are going to begin the second part of today's meetings, and again, I thank you all so much. I know there's so much for us to, that we have to get done, and I just wanted to, I'm sorry, excuse me. The next conversation is for the school board auditors, and for some reason, I don't know why, I had sent out an email, but for some reason, I don't know if you all received it. So, as we all know, we have to have a board auditor, so that's something that we have to make sure that we put into place. The information, I went back and I looked to see what we did a couple years ago regarding this, and when I was looking at that information, we had Denise Carlin and Susan Malley were the ones who helped us get through that process. And I know Ms. Gittens was very much involved in it, because she was the chair at that time when we brought on RSM. So when I asked Susan, she was not here, so Ms., Dr. Desamore, with the assistance of the Director of Financial Services, Michael Gatewood, he had reached out to, I believe it was 15 different firms, to see if we could get some information from them. And in the, when he sent this out, we had, one, two, three, three declined, did not want to submit any information. We had four firms who were interested in working, the possibility of working with us. One was going to give back, whenever, we're not sure when that will be. We had, one, two, three, four, five, six, and we had six that had no response either way. The only one that we did receive is from a CRA, Car Riggs and Ingram, are the only ones who actually sent us any information. Even though we had two other one, three other ones who were interested, they did not send us any information at all. us any information at all. And I apologize, no, we have two who sent us. So we also had Car Riggs and Ingram, and then we also had Molden and Jenkins. They sent us information regarding their process as well. So I guess my question is today, and the only reason I put this out here was to see what the pleasure of the board was and where you all want us to move with this. Because I'm not making this decision by myself, so Ms. Gittens.
Okay, I would like to present a, an alternative view of this as opposed to moving forward and selecting. I feel that what happened with RSM, that we need to discuss it.
Yes.
With them before we move forward. I feel that if we had input, specific input as to what caused them to make their decision, that perhaps even, either a mediator or gathering that information, we're looking at, if we can figure out what it is that we can do differently, we will save an enormous amount of time, energy, money, and effort. And I don't think any of us believe that, given the right circumstances and coming to a meeting of the minds, that we could not work with RSM. From what I've understood, some of the issues are, they are fixable. I don't know if RSM would be amenable to, you know, revisiting the situation. But I think rather than throwing the baby out with the bathwater, that we need to find out, what are the issues? We haven't really discussed that. And if we don't discuss it, who's to say we're not going to repeat the same thing, hiring somebody different? Where are we? What is it that we could do to fix the situation or to make it better for both parties and move forward? In the meantime, if you all decide, because I don't think we should move forward and just finding someone right now, I think we should get to the gist of it. And if so, then that may mean extending, I don't know where the contract is with them right now, with RSM. But even so, I think we should extend it at least the next, you know, three to four months. Do you have that answer?
Yes, Mr. Dupree Bruno.
With regard to the contract with RSM, there is none.
Correct.
They have completed their two projects and they are not willing, at least less than I know, we're not willing to move forward with any other projects or scope of work with the district.
That is, that is correct. I'm going to go to Ms. Morgan real quick, and then Ms. Patrica. I'll come back to you, Ms. Gittens.
So I have a couple of questions. First, Attorney Dupree Bruno, is there an obligation for us to, is there a deadline for the year when we must have an auditor in place?
So when we, when I reviewed this statute last time, it doesn't give a specified timeline. It just says that we need to have an auditor.
Right.
So I think time is of the essence.
Well, it's of the essence through Jan., through June 30th, '22, through December 31st, '21.
I'd, no, I think you need to have a board auditor. If you can get somebody within the next couple of months, three months, you need to have a board auditor.
All right, well, I would recommend that instead, we move ASAP with the audit committee, and that the audit committee make recommendations to us about how we proceed. Because we're talking about staffing them, the audit committee, with local people who are professionals in the field. And I think this board would benefit from the expertise that they would be able to provide to us. None of us are auditors up here. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
And that is exactly what I was going to say. I don't know how we hire an internal auditor without the audit committee. One of the primary functions of the audit committee is to advise the board on the hiring of an internal auditor. So we are not in a position right now to hire. And I believe that if, you know, this were an audit finding by the state, if they come in and audit us, I think we are making a good faith showing that we're trying, but we're trying to do it correctly, not quickly. And we want to do it well. We don't just want to hire somebody to be in compliance with the statute. I think the steps we're taking right now show we are in compliance with the statute.
Great, thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. I would agree with that because we, we do need, by statute, we do need an auditor, a school board internal auditor. I agree also that we do need to have a conversation about what, what happened with RSM. So I don't know if this is the time to do that, but the audit committee would be invaluable for us to move forward. And I don't know, Attorney Dupree Bruno, would making the effort to convene the audit committee now cover us in terms of being in compliance? And what is the status right now with the audit committee?
So at this point, I'm still waiting to hear back from the financial advisory committee in terms of their comments for the audit, audit policy. I don't have that yet. Once we've received that, it needs to go back to the board for you to give your final comments. We can move forward with rulemaking process thereafter. The board needs to select the individuals they want to place on the audit committee, and then you will have a functioning audit committee. And then just to go back to what Ms. Morgan was asking, the, I'm trying to look at the legislative history in terms of when that language was, in terms of the internal board auditor. I do believe it was 2019.
Yes.
But I will double check that.
Ms. Giovinelli?
So we can't wait for the finance committee to have, they haven't had a quorum in months. And so we can't wait on that, I'm sorry. But, and, and not only that, but they are not even, they don't even meet during the summer, and most of them, the committees don't. So we can't, we cannot wait on that. So I would just keep reiterating that. But, I mean, I agree, we do need an audit committee. I, I don't know what the holdup has been that, on that. I think even RSM has suggested the audit committee, and, and I actually spoke to Ms. Ewing, and she recommended the audit committee right away. And, and possibly, if we had maybe someone that could work with them directly, they have not closed the door. However, we, we do need to address how we got here. Because I've spoken at FSBA conference two weeks ago, I spoke to many people that use RSM. So I believe it's us, and it was this board that ran off RSM, that was a very reputable firm. And I think that's embarrassing. And as other board members have said on this board, if, who's going to want to work for us if they come back, go back and watch and, and see how RSM was treated on May 25th? So I think that meeting in itself speaks for itself. And then there's been comments that's been made out to the public about negative, negative statements about RSM that was publicly stated, and that doesn't look good on this board either.
So, Mr. Dupree Bruno?
So I just want to refresh the board's recollection. Where we were was that we were asking for RSM to be able to review the audit policy. And I believe the board actually had a consensus to allow them to work on the audit policy in the Booster Club manual. And then RSM decided that they were not going to move forward with that.
That's correct.
So that's how come it ended up going to the finance advisory committee to have them review it.
That is, that is correct. We, we wanted them to piecemeal, take part of this and look at this, but don't look at this, and don't do this, and do this.
Yeah.
And that's when they were going back to look at what they were going to do, and they said, no, we're not doing any of it. That's, that's, you're correct in what you just said. Ms. Gittens?
And, and I agree. We have been for months now tossing around the audit committee. RSM said that they really would like to work with the audit committee. If, in my opinion, if we had had the audit committee in place, they would have had a voice to be able to discuss what their needs were and what they needed to move forward or to not move forward. It would have been an opportunity for them. I think that we need to, and, you know, at least before moving forward at a swift pace of hiring someone, that we revisit the situation with RSM. And also, I agree with you, we should have the audit committee. They had nowhere to go. They had no one that was, you know, they were able to discuss it with. And what I was going to say initially, one of their issues was not having a concise person or contact that they dealt with as, you know, it was kind of here and there and, and various things. I just think to move forward at a better pa, you know, to make us look even better, it's, let's see what the problem was, let's see if we can fix it, let's see if we can mend it before we, you know, jump headfirst into hiring someone.
Okay, I just, I just want to correct something. They had a point person, as they always have since they've been here, so it was always the chair. So it was yourself, then it was Ms. Fisher, then it was me. And their concerns were that their hands were tied and that they could not get their work done. So I, there was a point person for them.
When I was the chair, as far as point person, I was the liaison between them and all of the rest of the board. As far as their specific duties and doing what they do, they need to be, have that point person be a finance person that can answer their questions, not you or I or whoever is chair. That's not what their issue was. When they needed information or they needed to find out something, they need someone in that realm. One of the suggestions I have, I believe we're still looking for a district internal auditor as well. And once we have that position, I would say that would be their connect. That when we have someone that's the internal auditor, that they, you know, and in other districts, that's what happens. At least they communicate and are able to, you know, maneuver through the financial information.
Thank you. Ms. Fahn?
Okay, I agree with several of the comments made. Number one, I think we need to put off a serious discussion of a new hire for our board auditor. We need to get the committee going. And I agree absolutely with Mrs. Giovinelli. We can't wait on the finance committee because they haven't had, I mean, they're not going to be meeting, even if they are meeting in the summer, they haven't, they haven't had a quorum. It's, it's been a problem. We need, this is a decision we need to make. I was very, very distressed to see the email that you sent out a while back, sending forth RSM's resignation, abrupt resignation, which I, I can't blame them for. Because there was a problem. There was a problem from, that we need to fix, that we actually, and right now, we have a new superintendent, and we need to have, or the board consensus on this to Dr. Savage. Because there were issues with staff providing information in a timely manner. And it goes way back to before Mr. Dupree Bruno, or about the time she came on the board. Remember, Mr. Quick and I had several conversations, and there was a back and forth on, we were developing the policies, and, and that took forever. And so there's something in our process somewhere. There was a huge glitch because RSM was saying, no, we're ready. And staff said, no, we gave them. And that, that can't be. We, we absolutely, before we hire somebody else, we need to get that worked out. And RSM has a stellar reputation in the state. And the final presentation that they made to this board right before they resigned was a complete utter embarrassment to me. Because we have talked at this dais about how we treat staff members, and just asking some, some questions has been put out there as something horrendous. Well, they were brow beaten during that, and we cannot, we, we can't do that again. And we're not going to get anybody who wants to come. They watched that meeting, nobody's going to want to come here. And finally, we need to also, at this point, discuss Lighthouse. Because we're paying for Lighthouse. And I'd like Mrs. Dupree Bruno to address it, because the last email that she sent out said that she had kind of worked out something with Mr. Quick about some complaints that had come in. But if we don't have an auditor, I, I can't see why we're paying Lighthouse when we don't have the whole, that whole process. So there's a lot of issues that we need to work out as, as a board. And I think the Lighthouse is important, the two top things, what are we going to do with Lighthouse? And how can we get this audit committee going without waiting for the input from finance, which we can't wait on anymore? So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Fahn. And I know finance has had it for quite some time, and just tried to get the information back. So I, it was just some of the verbiage that I think RSM had, Mr. Dupree Bruno, if, if I'm not correct, then please correct me, that RSM had shared with us, and some of the finance had shared with us, some of the verbiage of who makes up the, I think that was the only thing that we were waiting for, who actually makes up that committee. And that's what.
So there was.
Both of them had shared.
There was also some.
And if you will, Madam Chair, the other thing that I wanted to hear about before we end today at the proper time is Lighthouse.
Yes, I totally agree with you.
Yeah, those two things.
100%. Thank you.
So with regards to the policy, the last time that the board reviewed the policy, there were some specific requests that were made in terms of who can sit on the board, and there were some more terms of art from the audit world that they wanted to be included. And the instruction was to go back to RSM, work with RSM in finalizing that policy. Then we had some difficulty with RSM because RSM could not do any work without a new scope of work that authorized them to do so, and that required board approval. We had a delay because of the retirement. So finally, when Lighthouse did come, this is where the board actually gave a consensus.
For RSM?
RSM did come, the board did give a consensus for them to move forward on two aspects. But because they would not participate in that new scope of work, that's when we said, well, the next best thing is to go through the finance committee. So somebody with a finance background or an audit background does need to eyeball this policy one more time to make sure that the request from the board at the last time is incorporated. And I also understand that there may have been some changes in language that the finance committee and other individuals wanted to add in there. Once that is done, then we can present it to the board. The board can go through its, you know, review it, and then hopefully approve it so we can move it forward with the formal rulemaking process. And you can go ahead and appoint individuals to that committee. That's going to take some time because the rulemaking process is 28 days by itself.
Right. But I'm thinking that we have to get, we have to give a deadline that, you know, within the next, like, we're given deadlines for everything else. So within, by, by the end of this month, we need to have all that information into us so we can bring it back before us and, and can move forward with it.
So, so, Madam Chair, let me reach out to Mr. Sean Williams. I think he was one of the individuals that was looking at the policy to see if, if perhaps him and I, he'd be willing to work with me on finalizing and getting those.
There was a Mr. Cohen as well that was.
Mr. Cohen. So let me see if I could work on that. So let me see if I can work on that and then see if I can bring it to the board as quickly as possible. With regards to Lighthouse, the original intent of Lighthouse was that all complaints that came in for Lighthouse, regardless of what it was—
Through the hotline.
Through the hotline, would go through RSM, would go through the School Board Attorney and Legal Services to determine legal sufficiency. Once that determination was made, then it would be funneled to the appropriate departments to handle. There was a, I think it was a workshop or briefing where RSM was here and the board did not want RSM to participate in some of the other aspects of those complaints. The board only wanted RSM to participate in waste, fraud, and abuse. So that's what the scope of work entails for them to review waste, fraud, and abuse. We did not receive any complaints, except I think within the last few months, we got two waste, fraud, and abuse complaints. The rest of the complaint, other department. So now, we have two that were forwarded, one was forwarded to Lighthouse, but I'm sorry, to RSM. But again, RSM, given this, where we are now, so what I did was talk to Mr. John Quick to see if we can put a filler in there for those waste, fraud, and abuse claims that came in, that we can address them quickly between Mr. Quick, myself, and also make a request, an oral opinion from the Commission on Ethics so that we can move those forward so they're not sitting.
And then, and then, Mr. DePree Bruno, can you please also clarify, because the way that it was set up, the way that I understood it to be set up, and that's where there, there came the problem, there was, it's exactly what you said, it was supposed to be funneled down in the beginning when RSM actually brought that to us to do this for the hotline. So we have the hotline, people call the hotline, goes through Lighthouse, they see if it's legal sufficient or not, then it was disseminated to certain areas. However, what was, there was not anything that stated there was employee-related or there was waste, fraud, and abuse. Then all of a sudden, that hotline became the hotline for board members, unfortunately. And then it was like, oh, my goodness, they're not employees, they're not waste, fraud, and abuse. Where do they go? So that became this whole thing. And that's something that we, as a board, we need to, to fix that because that's where we've come into so many issues, I believe, that has taken place because of that particular. We don't have anything for that. And, you know, on one hand, we're saying, we don't want to do this and we don't want to do that. But yet, this hotline is now being used for that purpose. And somebody does have to look at that and say, is this legally sufficient? And then we just put it in a file or wherever it goes. And instead of going through all this, you know, heartache and everything else that everybody else has been going through. So I, that's, that's a conversation we have to have. And where do we see that go? And so thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Vaughn, because we, that has not, to me, Lighthouse has not been what we really needed it to be, unfortunately. That's, that's the way I feel. I don't know if anybody else feels the same way or there's any other comments. But I did have to bring this, you know, the audit up to date, just so that we, that we can start having conversations and, and know where, you know, where we need to be moving forward and where, what's our next steps. Because I'm not going to be that person that makes those decisions for everybody. Ms. Giovinelli?
So, and I gotta, I have to remind everybody that we actually can't police, even when complaints come in on board members, technically, we can't police them. I mean, really, you shouldn't be calling the Ethics Commission unless we're, you're given authorization to do that, if you really think about it. Because that's, no one has the authority to do that unless that person wants to file their own ethics complaint directly. I mean, really, this board doesn't have that authority.
Let me just clarify something because I think that, that there may be some confusion. The Ethics Commission has attorneys that are available for attorneys and members of the public to call on various scenarios, not necessarily that you're calling to make a report on anything. You're calling and you're saying, I have this particular scenario with first and airperson B., and you're not giving specific details. You're trying to get some advice. And that's what they do. And that's, that's why they're there, to provide advice to counsel. So it's not, there's a whole nother process if you want to file a complaint. That's, that's not what we're doing. And I have called the Ethics Commission multiple times on various things, just to get guidance and to make sure that, in my advice, that I'm giving you proper advice.
Thank you.
So could, could I just then ask, because this, of course, is going to have to come back to another meeting, if I could ask you all to give guidance of where our next steps would be? And of course, we have to do this because we, it's our only way of communication. So could you all then, other than we need to construct the Audit Committee, and we'll try to do that in a, by the end of the month, at least, to have all that, the information? Does that work for everybody? For that portion of it? Because it's going to take us some time? Okay? And then, Ms. Kittens?
Yes, I will ask again to, maybe you need to take consensus, but we need to revisit the situation with RSM before we try to move forward in just hiring someone new. And, and conversation has gone on, but no one has really said, yes, we need to do that. And I would like to hear that. I, I really think that we should do that, but if no one has an appetite for it, then, you know, I'll drop it.
Personally, I will reach back out to Jennifer, because she is the, she's the head of it. I will reach out to Jennifer and have that conversation with her regarding what was requested here. So I will certainly do that because she and Claire are the ones who actually spoke to me. So I will be more than happy to do that.
Madam Chair, you make one—
So can you follow up? How will you—
I will call them and then I will get the response and I will let everybody know what that respond was from them.
And you're—
Actually, I will have Ms. DePree Bruno sit in there with me when we have that conversation.
Madam Chair, I think you need to have a consensus to see what the will of the board is on that, if they want you to move forward with that action.
Okay. Well, the Audit Committee is something that we know we have to have. Okay? So that's number one.
The call to RSM.
Okay. But Audit Committee, we'll go ahead and do that. That's number one. So that, I know we're going to do that. So as far as making a phone call to RSM and seeing how they feel, how they stand, and all of that good stuff, do I have consensus for me to go ahead and reach back out to them?
Not yet.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes. So what is the process now to proceed with the Audit Committee?
Okay. So the Audit Committee, we would, of course, we have to come with the policy of what that Audit Committee was or is. Then once we have that, then we have to appoint people on that Audit Committee. And that's like we do any other committees.
Okay. And so I'm, I'm clear on the timeline for that. Like, where are we with that?
Okay.
This has been, this has been ongoing for months.
Okay. And not appoint anybody to the committee until we have the policy. So one, we have to get the policy. So if Ms. DePree Bruno gets all, that's what I just said, at the end of the month, if she gets, has that ready, prepared by the end of the month, which is a week, a little over a week, what is it, nine days? So if she has, if we have that ready to go, then we start the procedures of, what is it, first reading, second reading? Once we get all of that done, then we can start appointing people to that committee. So what is that, 28 days?
So just, just a refresher. The policy is drafted.
Yes.
It's come before the board and the board gave instructions on changes that needed to be made, with instructions to go back to RSM to discuss those changes and make those changes. We had a snafu because RSM can't do anything unless it has a new scope of work.
Correct.
And then we came to the board, I don't know when it was, last month, came to the board, and then the board gave authorization for those two things to be done, the audit policy and the booster guidelines for RSM to assist with that. But then we had a snafu. RSM no longer wants to handle any new scopes of work. So with that, we send it to the Finance Committee. And what I'm going to do now is reach out to a few individuals directly on that committee to see if they can help me with finalizing the policy. Then the policy will come to the board. If the board approves the policy, then we will then set it forward for the formal rulemaking process. First reading, second reading. That will take at least 28 days. Thereafter, once the policy is up and running, we will then have the board select the individuals that it would like appointed to the Audit Committee. So that, so we're looking at, realistically, probably August, realistically.
Ms. Kittens? And then, Ms. Patrica?
Okay. Well, first off, I have one question. If we had included the Audit Committee and all that in the scope of work for RSM, would you not, Attorney DePree Bruno, be working with them to put together the Audit Committee? I thought that's what I heard you say before. Is that correct?
Absolutely. If that was part of the scope of work, we would have been moving forward.
And, and my point is with RSM, folks, we have been asking them, do this and do this, but don't do that. And it was not within their scope of work, so they were not getting compensated for it. They did several things that they didn't get compensated for. And I'm just, I'm just saying, I think the first thing we need to do is to figure, can we mend things with RSM? Then you wouldn't have to go to several people outside or whatever. You would have some assistance, some professional assistance in helping put together the board because that's what they do. And I, I just think we need to have that conversation with them, which we have not had.
So, Madam Chair, I believe that's what you were taking a consensus on.
I'm going to have, Ms. Patrica had one thing to say as well.
A question for the Attorney DePree Bruno, if I may. So while you'll present the first reading at the end of June—
I'm not, I, I do not want to present a first reading at the end of June because this policy has come back to the board at least twice and there's been some significant changes. So once we get to a point where it's not going to be significant, the board is pretty much on consensus that this is the policy we want, then I'll bring it for a first reading. Because if I start that rulemaking process and there's substantive changes, I have to start all over again.
Okay. So after the first reading, there's no reason why we can't be advertising for members? I mean, we don't have to go through another month after it's approved as a policy. We, we can start the process of recruiting and identifying potential qualified members of the Audit Committee.
The long, I, I would not formally advertise. However, if the board wants to start looking at names and start thinking about it, that's fine. Because during the second reading, it goes to public hearing.
Right.
And I don't know what the public is going to say, if they want anything changed and, you know. So I will be very careful with that until it's actually finalized.
I understand. And, and, you know, when we talked about sending this to RSM, I, I did say at that time that I believed you were capable of writing a policy and bringing it before the board and, and, you know, amending that policy based on board and community feedback. So I, I don't think the loss of RSM in this process is really detrimental in any way. You know, I mean, it's, again, sometimes when I say things, they come out the wrong way. I don't mean this the wrong way, but the, the job of the board attorney is, is policy. I mean, that's, you bring forth policy recommendations to us. I have looked at Audit Committee policies for other school boards across the state. There are some great examples out there. And I don't see why we can't just get this done without, you know, based on, relying on your expertise and the network of other attorneys you have that you can reach out to across the state. And the final thing that I will say is, three members of this board found RSM to be ineffective. Three members of this board found that to be the case. So if I'm RSM, I, I see the writing on the wall. That, that's really all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Okay. So, and, and I will also put out there too, two of the people that are on Finance that were looking at this, they are ex-employees of RSM. So they understand the whole makeup and just, I just had to put that out there as well. Ms. Kittens?
Okay. I, I do have to respond to that last comment. If three members of the board of seven found them to be ineffective, we work on a majority, so therefore, four felt that they were effective and majority would rule. So I don't understand the comment of if three said no. We have many votes that are for three or three, four. So I, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. And we're, we're really not here to, to talk on RSM. We're here to see how we're moving forward. So I guess—
Chair, you're, you're still in the process—
We're on the process of saying, does anybody want me to call us to reach out to RSM? Ms. Morgan?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Not, not at this point, but yes.
Okay, later. Okay, thank you.
So, at this very point—
No.
No. Wait.
Thank you. Ms. Kittens?
I believe we need to salvage, if possible, the relationship with RSM to save time, money, and effort of the district's money at this point. We need to move forward. This whole thing, even with the Audit Committee and all this, this is all taking way too long. And if we had someone who we've already worked with that understands what it's about, we can move forward. We have so many other things on our plate right now. This does not need to be at the top of it. Let's see if we can do it and move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Giovinelli, at this time?
Absolutely, yes. But not at this time. Because we need to get our act together. We do not have our act together. We are the problem, not RSM. So, and, and I'm going to, please let me finish.
Go ahead, please.
Because the whole situation with RSM is our own fault. And no offense to the three board members that were chairs for the last three years, but that's where the problem is, is at. Because the chair defines a meeting and directs and gets things on the agenda. And RSM just kept getting pushed aside. Instead of staying focused on RSM, we would have an Audit Committee right now. So we need to address that. We need to have Audit Committee. The Advisory Committee lists and applications have been changed to define it, define criteria. And I don't believe that we did, we talked about it, but I, we were not changing the applications where, where, and the applications look like, looks like where some people shouldn't apply because they don't, you know, have an architect experience on, on the construction. And it's, they're all separated out individually. And we need to invite community members of, of all aspects of the community, not just something that is in finance and meets that finance criteria, they're in banking or whatever. And that also was changed and added. And so, and I've had a lot of complaints about that because some of the people wouldn't even qualify that are chair, chairs on some of those right, right now as we speak. RSM made a recommendation on the 25th. We need to go back to that recommendation as a board and make a decision. Because no one made a decision that, that day. I wasn't at that meeting, but I watched it and no one made a decision. It was just a decision, there was none made. And they made recommendations that I believe should be addressed and we should take those recommendations and implement them in our processes and policies regarding their recommendations. So I need, we need to focus back on that. And I think that's really important. We need to make sure that when we finally do talk to RSM, that they have the, the freedoms and liberty to do the scope of work. And, and if it goes beyond that, they don't need to wait a month or two months before this board decides to make a decision or not a decision, for them to be able to have the, to get the information that they need and, and start that process. We need to put trust back in RSM. They do this all over Florida. And they came highly recommended. I've talked to numerous people at FSBA at that conference and they were shocked over our situation, completely shocked. Because they, there is value in RSM and we need to see that value. And that was really part of their issue, is we don't see the value of it. And we're not taking the recommendation seriously. And so it's, it's back on this board. We don't have our act together. And we need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giovinelli. Ms. Fisher?
I, I think that we should reach out to them at some point, not right now, because I, I do agree that we need to get our act together and decide. We have been provided with various statements of work and there has not been an agreement on a part of this board, as with many other situations. We, and, and, and I, I feel like, at this point, after my 11 years on the board, I'm very distressed with the enhancement— I'm very distressed with the enhancement of the division of the Board. I mean, people constantly remind us of that, and we need to start working as we move forward as a Board. When we have a Board Auditor, or when we have a consultant who's going to work with us on looking for a new Superintendent, we need to know what we want. And that doesn't mean what I want, or what you want, or what Betsy wants. It means what we, as a Board, agree that we want. And until we get to that point, I don't see how we can move forward. I mean, we are really in a very difficult situation. And I think it's about time that we get a little bit of introspectiveness and look at ourselves, take responsibility for some of the statements and comments that have been made. People, I talked to Matt and to Clara, and they said, we can't do this to our staff. We cannot be treated like this. So, they were, not only were they criticized and embarrassed, but when they asked for the ability to move forward and do, fulfill their statement of work, well, you have to come back to us and ask us every time, and that takes, well, and I'm not going to blame it on staff, because they said they had cooperation from staff, and that there were some things that it took time, but that was probably because we had some vacancies in our Finance Department. And so, it has been a difficult year. And then there was the pandemic, which really, we were not working at optimum, you know, at an optimum rate of speed, not only with the Auditor, but in general. And we weren't the only ones. So, I think that we have penalized a company that had a great reputation and had the criteria that we needed to fulfill our needs, because as opposed to an in-house Auditor, we had a whole firm with a variety of expertise, and that's what we need, because we have a complicated organization. So, at this point in time, I think we need to take halt and take a deep breath and take a look at ourselves. We have our Board Self-Evaluation, which tells it all in a nutshell. So, until we're all ready, each and every one of us, to take responsibility for our own behavior and decide that we are going to put our own personal agendas aside and work as a team for the good of this district, I don't see us moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, so, Ms. Gittens?
Just one more thing. I agree with what Ms. Fisher said, and Ms. Jevonelli, and several others. The issue is, how do we know how to move forward if we don't know what we need to fix besides the obvious thing of personalities or whatever? But, we have an opportunity with RSM now to, even if we just have the Chair talk with them and bring specifics. So, as we're moving forward, we know, where did we stub our toe? We, I don't think, have the ability to sit here now without input from them to decide what we're going to do and how we're going to do things better. What did we do? We have an opportunity for a professional organization to say, this would help you be better. And for us to avoid doing that, even as we're putting together the Advisory Board or whatever, they've got the experience. They can tell us. Otherwise, we're going to keep stepping in the same hole until we find out how to navigate around it. And that means just communicating with the people. That's all I'm asking.
So, right now, Ms. Fisher, did you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, I am a little bit confused about why we can't move forward with the policy and get that going, because we already have input from staff and from RSM regarding the policy. So, I think that we, that needs to be, we need to move on that. That needs to be accelerated. And then we need to decide on what is going to be our mechanism to come together as a team and as a Board, so that we can speak as one voice.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And Ms. Patrica?
Just point of order, I believe you were taking consensus, and all seven have been polled. And it's 12:15.
Thank you.
I don't think you got Ms. Fisher, did you?
Yes, I did. So, right now, as what it looks like, Mr. DePree Bruno, if we can get this Audit Committee, get the policy completed by the end of this month, that way, we can move forward with that. And then we will schedule another time to have the discussion on, once we have the Committee, we'll decide on another date that we will come back and speak on how do we, as Ms. Fisher says it so gracefully, pull each, pull everybody together to work for the good of the district and have the conversation on where do we go with Audit Committee for Auditors, as well as the conversation for Lighthouse. We'll include all of that together. And in the meantime, I still will go ahead and, we'll still be receiving some information regarding other audit firms, and that will be sent out to you too, so that way, everybody's aware of the ones who are coming in. So, that way, once we, at that time that we may go out and speak to RSM, as everybody says, they would like that to take place, but not at this time, then they would be part of that, the determination of what firm would we go with. And Ms. Gittens?
Yeah, I am confused. I thought we were taking, was the consensus voted down? Can I finish? Was the consensus voted down to talk to RSM?
Yes, at this time.
And what was the vote?
The vote was?
Six to one.
Yeah, six to one, because the others who said yes, yes, but not at this time. So, with you as, you as yes, Ms. Vaughn as yes, as later.
Okay, so my point is, I just, I just wanted on record that we are saying to a professional firm that we don't want to talk to them now. We will put them on ice until we're ready to talk with them and to move forward. I really honestly do not understand that decision, but maybe I'm just not explaining it well. But, thank you.
You're very welcome. So, Ms. DePree Bruno?
So, Madam Chair, I'm going to forward to the Board the last draft of the Audit Committee policy, because I know it's been a while since you've seen it. And I will also forward the Audit Selection Policy. If you will recall, that there is a provision in the statute that requires the Board to have a selection policy. And in my conversation with the Attorney, the School Board Attorney in Miami-Dade, I thought that they had a good resolution, because the Board did not want to have the Board Liaison chair the Audit Committee, but the statute requires that for the Audit Selection Committee, that the Board Liaison chair that. So, I'm sending you two policies. One is the Selection Committee Policy, and then one is the Audit Committee Policy. And the Selection Committee Policy is only to select the Auditor that will do the external audit. That is it. But, it would be the same individuals, and the Board Liaison would chair that process. It's a procurement process, so that we're in compliance with the statute. And then, of course, you have your normal Audit Committee, where the Board Liaison serves in a non-voting advisory capacity. So, I'm going to send both of those to you, and if you could send me feedback individually, I would appreciate that, so I can move this forward.
Thank you. And Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I would like another piece of information from Ms. DePree Bruno in terms of our contract with Lighthouse. What kind of a contract do we have? How much money per month? I don't remember. Are we doing monthly or per?
Lighthouse is $5,000 for the year.
I'm sorry, say that again?
$5,000 for the year.
For the year, okay. So, it's not, is it call taker or intakeer? Okay, so, it's not an exorbitant amount if it's, and there's no additional per complaint handled, right?
No, 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 it's the, yes.
Okay, well, I was thinking it was a higher amount, but I'm just not sure what we should do in terms of keeping it, keeping the complaints coming in as, you know, since a huge piece of that whole process with Lighthouse. I'd be interested in the Board's opinion on whether we should keep that running or suspend that part that would normally have gone to RSM, the fraud, waste, and abuse. And from what you're saying, it was a small number.
With regards to the waste, fraud, and abuse, we only had two calls, and one was sent to RSM, and then one, we got after RSM decided not to engage in the scope of work. So, with that one, I went ahead and contacted Conflict Council, and we reviewed it for legal sufficiency. And also, just to double-check and to make sure, I contacted some counterparts at the Ethics Commission to have them also just kind of say, yep, I agree with you in your analysis. And then I drafted a memorandum to the Board that explained whether or not it was legally sufficient, so we can move forward. I intend to do that with the other one that is pending as well, until such time as the Board gives any additional direction as to what to do.
So, are you feeling that that's a sufficient process? I really, I mean, when we talked about all of this, that was huge. I mean, we had in our mind one area, the whistleblowers, and that seems to have.
Well, all of these, but all of these are still whistleblower complaints that are coming in. They just happen to be against Board members.
Okay. So, if it was a whistleblower on fraud, waste, abuse, then we'd be okay to keep up?
So, if it's waste, fraud, and abuse, I mean, I would prefer for us to get the Auditor involved, or an Audit Committee, or somebody else involved. That's why I contacted Mr. Quick, as well as the Commission on Ethics, because there cannot just be the Board Attorney making that determination as to legal sufficiency.
Okay, well, under the circumstances that it's, we're paying a whole lot less than I thought, and it sounds like you've got it handled on how to proceed.
Only for the Board member issues I will handle, of course, and as well as waste, fraud, and abuse. I do not, and I am not involved on anything else that's coming in from Lighthouse.
Okay, okay, so I'm going to kind of take back the thought that I originally had on there, because I think they do provide a very important service. It's just too bad that it's not working at least the way I originally envisioned it to work.
And that's something we can definitely revisit with.
That's for later.
The other, for sure.
And I would also add, Madam Chair, that perhaps Dr. Savage will have an opportunity to review this process, as well as the Superintendent, to maybe make some recommendations as well to the Board.
Well, the only thing with that is that the Auditors, they answer to, they do not answer to a Superintendent. They answer to the Board members. So, that, I would be definitely concerned about that one. Ms. Gittens, you have one final thought?
No, my main thing is, to me, when we started Lighthouse and all of that, it was RSM involved in the process and the district, and we need to revisit the Lighthouse situation. So, if we're not going to talk to RSM for some time, which I have no idea what time length you're talking about, and we need to do that, I'm just not sure how we move, just keep moving forward without getting input from them.
Okay, so, if I may, so, for clarity, we are, Mr. DePree Bruno is doing the Audit Committee. We're going to get that going, and then we will still obtain information from other audit firms for possibilities for, to look at in the future, as well as in the future contacting at a later date, RSM as well. And so, we will schedule a workshop on this after the, after we have the Board Audit, and I'm sorry, the Audit Committee set up. Is that, am I hearing that correct? And we'll set this up again for a workshop to have all this conversation, ladies. Is that correct, Ms. Jevonelli?
I'm not interested in listening, hearing about any other firms until we get to the root of our issue. And our issue is not being able to work as a Board and get this audit thing straightened out. We need to get the Committee, and we need to deal with RSM in how, what we did wrong. They need to, we need an evaluation on ourselves from them. I mean, I just think that, you know, I'm still, I'm going to go back and I'm going to say it again. I've said it, this will be my third or fourth time. RSM gave a recommendation. Are we not going to take those recommendations and do what they said? Because, I mean, we're not talking about it. I keep saying it. Nobody says anything. I hear crickets. And I think we need, this is where we keep stumbling, is not making any decisions. No one says anything. You know, we let one Board member just tear up the, the, Mr., what it was, whoever did the presentation that day on the 25th, and then it just died from his recommendation. And he, his recommendations were important, and he was criticized and devalued. And I think we've got to stop that, and I think we need to, I'm going to make, I can bring this back up at the Board Table, and we can make a motion on it, if that's the way y'all want to handle it. But, we need to talk about how we got here.
Ms. Jevonelli, can you please tell me what a recommendation is that, so we can?
He recommend, he recommended a policy regarding procurement, and at the school level. I wasn't even at the meeting, and I, y'all were. So, I mean, nobody said anything, and there was other stuff, but y'all, I don't know. This is where we.
Somebody needs to watch May 25th.
Y'all were there.
Yes.
He was, he says it becomes a risk. I mean, so, I just don't understand how come no one else sees what I saw, and I wasn't even at the meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. So, Dr. Desmore is here, and I would like to hear from her from the staff perspective, because RSM worked directly with our staff in a number of areas, one being procurement and finance. And I would like to know if she has information that might be helpful to us at this point in deciding, you know, what else we need to do to move forward.
Dr. Desmore? Do you mind? And thank you.
Thank you. Yes, good afternoon, members of the Board. So, just want some clarification as to the question.
Ms. Fisher, could you please clarify what you're asking her?
So, the work that was done with staff and RSM as they were going through their risk assessment, do you have any input from your perspective in your area of how we could, you know, what is it that we need to do differently that might help us to be able to get the policy going and move forward?
Well, so, the policy you're referring to is the Audit Committee Policy, right? Okay, so, the Audit Committee Policy is a different issue and subject from what they came to address with us, which was just to audit from the procurement standpoint in terms of any risks or making sure that we followed our procedure. So, I'll address both things. As far as the audit procedure that we went through with RSM regarding procurement matters, I thought that we got along just fine through the process. They asked for, you know, much information, which they should have, and we provided the information as requested. In the end, with the findings that they came and presented to the Board, as we discussed, they agreed that the findings that they presented were generally of low risk, that the audit, and this is, this is my characterization, not theirs, but we talked that, you know, the audit was a successful one, because the major areas really that procurement is involved in, which is that interface of, to, with the vendors and procuring, you know, solicitations really with all of our vendors, there were zero findings within that. And so, in our management response, we did talk about with the findings that they gave, what it is that we could do to implement. what it is that we could do to implement some changes or tweaks within process that we have. There was no policy that they recommended in that, just talked about different procedure that we might be able to implement. And in the management response, we talked about some of the procedures that we determined that we were going to work on implementing in response to the suggestions or the findings that they gave. In relation to, yes, ma'am?
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, no, I was just going to say, in relation to the audit committee policy, we did work, and when I say we, I mean me, and I believe Kelly from my office worked with Attorney DePree Bruno and a representative or two from RSM to review that initial policy, and we came and we reviewed that with the board. And I think we, from that, Attorney DePree Bruno took back some recommendations or thoughts or suggestions from that. So I think when we implement those, you know, those particular suggestions, I would believe that we would be ready to move forward with that policy, as we did get some input from RSM already related to that policy. And I believe at that particular board meeting, they came and presented with us on that draft policy at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, I know that, I'm listening to what Ms. Giavellini said, and I also was unable to be at that particular meeting. So what I'm suggesting is that all of us, well, me in particular, I don't know about the rest of you, it's May 25th, right? That we, in the next reasonable amount of time, go back and review what was put forth and the management response to it, and then following at least my opportunity and anybody else's opportunity to look back and refresh our minds on it, that we schedule an update from procurement or from Finance Division, Business Services, to see where you are with that, what has been actually instituted or not, and just, does that, I'd like to see if that sounds reasonable to the board. Basically, refresh our minds, and then at a certain point, have Dr. Desmore or someone from the department come back and update us on what was presented, and if any of those recommendations have been implemented.
No, I definitely hear what you're saying. Ms. Morgan?
I don't understand. I don't, I don't understand. I thought we had a presentation, a decision, you know, why are we going to look at it again? Recommendations were made, staff responded to those recommendations, done. We're introducing something totally, I don't know, I don't understand.
No, thank you, Ms. Morgan. And as we were having this conversation, it is coming back to me, it was definitely low risk, there were things that they seen at that particular time that were handled and corrected at that time, because I went, I remember speaking to them about the health inspectors coming into the restaurant and everything being corrected. So I remember that whole conversation, it just takes a minute to remember all that. But they did find the findings, because there was some confusion with the amount of money allocated for schools, thinking it was just for each school had, like, I can't remember the, a huge amount of money, but it wasn't for each school. So that was a little bit of the conversation. But, and then the question was to them, do they come back to check to see, to verify, to make sure that that stuff was taken care of? And their answer was, they don't do that. But yes, you had corrected the, or the department had corrected those issues. So I think, do you remember that now?
Just, yes, just to clarify, though, there was a recommendation related to some other things that was a longer-term fix. There wasn't everything that we had necessarily implemented in terms of their suggestions or their, you know, recommendations. And those were the things in the management response that we said, okay, we'll work on, you know, coming up with a longer-term procedure so that we could implement what it was that they were suggesting.
Correct. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, so there's really no problem in asking for an update on those things. And frankly, again, I need to, I need to review, and I don't care if something's low risk. Hey, it's lower risk to wear a mask with COVID in terms of spreading or catching it, but that doesn't mean you can't catch it. So a little analogy there. I want to hear explanation and how it goes. And I don't think that's asking for too much from the board. Just, you know, what have you implemented, and if there's some things you didn't implement, just explain it to us. Nobody's going to be browbeating like this board browbeat Matt from RSM. We're just asking.
Thank, so, Ms., thank you, Ms. Vaughn. So I really want to get back on track, because it's 12:36. So if I can, please, Dr. Desmore, if you can just maybe, Doran, one of the updates, send that information out of where you're at on those, that would be great, because I know that's not what this conversation was supposed to be about today. So I do apologize for that.
Yeah, we're happy to do whatever, whatever that is to the board's will, whether we're going to do a written update, whether we need to do a presentation. You all just need to give us direction on how it is you want to see that.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
It is the work of the internal auditor to follow up on recommendations that were made and to determine that they are being appropriately implemented. So I don't think it's the board's job to demand that staff do that. I think that whoever we use as an internal auditor going forward would follow up on those recommendations with staff and then report to the board.
And I appreciate that, but as a board member asking for that update, if we could just please do that, that would be great. I appreciate that. And I, if you don't mind, I'm just, it's 12:36, and we have another meeting. So I, again, so the audit committee, get that work in, set up a workshop where we can learn how to get along and where we need to move forward. And then we will then proceed on to our next topic, which will be the Lighthouse and auditors, correct?
Are you asking me, Chair?
No, I just want to make sure that's where we're at with everybody. Ms. Giavellini, did I miss something?
No, I just said it should be happy hour.
Okay, and then we're not having happy hour. So I am going to adjourn this meeting till 1:00, and thank you very much.